That has to be in here, that's why you haven't, that's why there can't be any responses outside of the context of this. The mayor, the elected officials, members of this body, everybody can't. I just want to make that one clear, that's why there's no responses. The letters are, you know, those emails are part of the records that are maintained by Morris Plains, but they can't be part of this application, your testimony or statements can't. Number two, I believe that Ms. Cooper is going to introduce herself, but there's an attorney that represents some of the members of the public. And as a general rule, people that are represented by counsel, your counsel speaks, you don't. So the limitation on whoever she represents that group, that'll carry further. Only she will be questioning the members that she represents won't be. She's going to introduce herself. And then the last one, you know, we have, we've had some special meetings, we have a special meeting on the sixteenth that's scheduled, a special meeting on the eighteenth. And as you know, that's because of the interest, the public interest and the length of time. And as you see, there's two other applications that are also going to be pushing the time. So I went and looked, you know, there are several ways to deal with matters in which there's extensive testimony, extensive interest. And I just want to read the applicable rule, and it's all, as I said before, it's unreasonable than a standard, what's reasonable. So the municipal land use law, forty colon fifty-five D dash one and everything that follows, gives the rules for running meetings. Section ten, sub D, and I'll just read it. "The testimony of all witnesses relating to an application for development shall be taken under oath or affirmation by the presiding officer, and the right of cross-examination shall be permitted to all interested parties through their attorneys, if represented, or directly, if not represented, subject to the discretion of the presiding officer and to reasonable limitations as to time and number of witnesses." And there's that word reasonable again. So, and I don't know, you know, there's several ways to deal with things. One, more meetings, which is what you've done. And you can limit the scope, the time and the ability, you know, the length of time for cross-examination or presentation. I don't know if the board is as interested in that or will, or the presiding officer, which is the chair. And in trying to come up with what the word reasonable is, I went and looked at a few cases that deal with this. It's all individual-based. They've had, the courts have upheld three minutes, five minutes, ten minutes that I can see. And again, I'm not recommending anything other than the tools that the board has, should it wish to deal with very significant public interest in this case. Anyway, that being said, I think if we could have the, if Ms. Petola would just bear with me for a minute, the attorney who represents several of the members, at least to introduce herself to the board, so we know who she represents. Very quickly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hi, my name is Heather Cooper. I'm from Watershed Legal Group, and I'm representing Morris Plains Citizens Group for Public Safety. I'm not going to give the members right now, but they're here. And my background, by the way, I just wanted to let you know, I've both worked in the private and public sector, ten years working for the city of Jersey City before going private. So I've been on both sides of this, and my intention is to be amicable with everything and make sure, you know, my cousin, Leslie's somewhere over here, that's how I found out about this, contacted me and were concerned in how I got involved with this case. So I, that's pretty much my introduction.
And I take it you'll self-limit the members of the LLC. You'll represent, you'll do the question, correct?
Yes, I'll be representing. We are going to, they did bring in an expert, a planning expert, Peter Steck. So we're looking forward to presenting his testimony as well. And thank you so much for this time.
Ms. Petola?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, board. It's nice to see everybody again. I do have one housekeeping matter that I'd like to address before we start. We did receive an email from Chris Shea, who is the fire marshal for Morris Plains. He said that he's been getting a lot of communications from residents. And he said that, would we be willing to label the curb in front of our building Fire Lane? And it's the curb that's parallel to Speedwell Avenue. And we have no problem doing that. So our plans will reflect that we will label the front portion of our parking lot as a Fire Lane along the curb. And he did mention, and I think this is relevant for, I think one of our experts said this, that he said, "If a fire breaks out of this building, the fire department will be taking over the entire parking lot along with Speedwell and Dayton Road." So as we suggested, they would take jurisdiction over the site anyway, but we will agree to make that label on the parking lot.
I think you were reading from something at some point that that could make it into the record. As it may already, I'm not sure, but it would have made it into the record at some point.
Sure. Okay, this is our final witness this evening. We have Mr. Nicholas Graviano. He is a professional planner, and I would ask that you be sworn in. Oh, that's right. Remember, Mr. Graviano, that you're still in growth?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Graviano, just, yeah, go ahead.
Just to note, I did not provide my qualifications. I was simply sworn in if the board would like that.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Graviano, please give the board the benefit of your qualifications.
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, a law degree from the Temple University School of Law, where I received a distinguished class performance in state and local government law. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I also hold an AICP certification. I've testified before boards and governing bodies in over a hundred municipalities in eighteen different counties, including Roxbury, Rockaway, Morris Township, East Hanover, to name a few here in Morris County.
Are there any objections on the board to accepting this call, please? Okay.
Thank you for having me, board.
Okay, Mr. Graviano, you prepared a analysis of the variances and waivers that we're seeking in this case, sir?
That is correct.
Could you please take the board through your justifications for why we believe these reliefs should be granted, sir?
Certainly, just a quick summary. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final site plan approval with lot merger in both variants for a specific piece of property known as Block 23. Lots four and five, that is located in the B2 business district zone. The lot is roughly point nine six seven acres, point nine seven six acres in area. The property features a hundred seventy feet of frontage along Speedwell Ave. And two hundred and forty-five feet of frontage along Dayton Road. Both properties are presently improved, both with a former Friendly's restaurant as well as a office building. The applicant is proposing to demolish all structures to construct a roughly three thousand square foot McDonald's restaurant with a two-suite drive-thru, thirty-nine seats with thirty-two onsite parking spaces. Landscaping, lighting, paving, curving, grading, drainage and other related improvements are proposed as well. The project is located in the B2 zoning district. The B2 zoning district stretches from Speedwell Avenue, on Speedwell Avenue from Dayton Road to Hanover Avenue. This is a district that permits wide range of commercial uses, including the drive-through restaurant, which is proposed before you this evening. In terms of setbacks, the applicant is exceeding all required yard setbacks. A front yard setback of thirty-three feet is required on Speedwell Avenue. The applicant has fifty-two feet. The front yard on Dayton, twenty-five feet is required. The applicant has a little over fifty-eight feet. In terms of the side yard, ten feet is required, eighty feet is proposed. And from the residential zone setback, thirty-five feet is required, ninety-six point seven feet is proposed with this application. The B2 district was amended to permit the drive-through uses in ordinance fourteen dash twenty-twenty-three, titled in ordinance to provide for the partial amendment, supplementation and revision of chapter thirteen, two thousand Borough Morris Plains Land Development Ordinance, section thirteen dash two point one. Definition of terms, section thirteen dash five point one C, Schedule C, permitted uses. It goes on to say, "Whereas the master plan reexamination report for the Borough Morris Plains adopted twenty eighteen of October recognized that increased competition with online shopping has adversely impacted brick-and-order retail sales establishment in the Borough's non-residential zones. To combat vacancies in the downtown areas, the reexam report recommended that Borough examine all the permitted uses of the non-residential zones in order to permit the experimental type of retail. Experimental type of retail seeks to attract customers to experience something in person at a commercial space or showroom that would not be possible online." It goes on to state, "In the summer of twenty twenty-one, the Master Review Committee undertook an examination of the permitted uses, and the Master Plan Examination Review Committee submitted a report to Borough Council on May tenth, twenty twenty-three, that recommended drive-through restaurants be a permitted permissible use in the B2 and B3 zones." So the Borough recognized that the use that the applicant's before the board with this evening is a response to the changing economy, and this such use advances the goals and purposes of the master plan. We've had numerous hearings on this application. We've heard numerous hearings of testimony from licensed professionals on behalf of the applicant. We've also heard a lot of questions from the concerned public, and the cornerstone of any community is public participation. And we applaud everyone who's been at these hearings, showing a commitment to their neighborhood and community. Based on this dialogue, the applicant has made numerous concessions and plan modifications. The first being that the applicant has reduced the proposed operational hours at the request of the board. The applicant is performing pedestrian and crosswalk improvements along Speedwell Avenue. The driveway exit onto Dayton Avenue has been designed to prohibit right turns steering vehicles towards the Speedwell intersection. An extensive landscaping package in Birmingham has been added to the yard adjacent to the residential neighbor on Dayton. The number of building mounted signs has been reduced. There will only be three wall-mounted signs that are modest on the building facades. And additionally, as you'll see in a future exhibit, the applicant will be willing to work with the municipality and the board on a facade design that is more traditional in nature in lieu of the more modern design that was not in favor by the board and some of the residents. So from a planning perspective, this is a very simple application. We've heard hundreds of questions and comments and everything, but this is a simple planning application. This is a permitted use before the board. The applicant does not need to justify this use before the board. This isn't the zoning board or demonstration of particular suitability, and an enhanced burden of proof is not necessary. The Borough has done that already by making this a permitted use via the master plan and the zoning ordinance. So when you really dig deeper and examine the relief being requested by the applicant, there is nothing that constitutes a substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. The first variance that the applicant is requesting is the loading variance, section thirteen dash five point seven B1, where a loading space is required and zero loading spaces are proposed. As you heard in previous testimony, the applicant's engineers testified that there will be two forty-five-minute deliveries a week in non-peak hour restaurant hours. Testimony and exhibits were given showing that the safe unloading of goods can occur in the drive aisle. This is the customary delivery method for the majority of the thirteen thousand McDonald's restaurants nationwide. I did a little research. No standalone McDonald's restaurant in Morris County has a dedicated loading area. No standalone Wendy's restaurant in Morris County has a dedicated loading area. And no standalone Burger King in Morris County has a designated loading area. So utilizing the drive aisle for loading is a very customary situation. Additionally, it reduces unnecessary pavement and impervious coverage for infrequent activity of deliveries on a very modest building. The applicant is also requesting parking variance pursuant to section thirteen dash five point seven A, Schedule E, off-street parking space requirements. The ordinance of the municipality actually has two different parking standards. The first being that one parking space shall be provided for every two point five seats within the building or one parking space for every seventy-five square feet of gross floor area, whatever is greater. So if you look at the parking requirement by the number of seats, that would be sixteen. However, the parking requirement through the gross floor area is forty-one, which is a little bit of an oddity. This is a very modest-sized restaurant, only three thousand square feet, where a good portion of the interior space is the kitchen area. You heard the traffic engineer give some data on this situation. As per the ITE calculations, a restaurant this size would only require fourteen off-street parking spaces. Additionally, you heard data of a survey of thirty-one McDonald's in New Jersey. The average is eighteen off-street parking spaces. The busiest McDonald's, which was on Route one and nine in Rodaway, utilized at peak hour thirty off-street parking spaces. That restaurant, however, is two thousand square feet larger than the one proposed today, and on a highway with an average daily traffic of sixty thousand vehicles, three times the amount of the twenty thousand which the Speedwell on this site enjoys. So the data shows that the ordinance required parking is not needed to adequately serve the restaurant, creating additional off-street parking. That would actually meet the ordinance standards, would create unnecessary payment and add additional unneeded impervious coverage to the site. The applicant is also requesting a fencing variance. A maximum of six feet is permitted, and eight feet is proposed in the rear yard adjacent to the landscape burn. This obviously provides increased screening for the neighbors. The benefit of the increased fence height outweigh any detriment that the extra two feet will create. Now, to discuss the signage variances, I will put forth Exhibit A-ten, which is a revised architectural elevation of the building, which does indicate the signage locations on the building. The building-mounted signage this exhibit will show. Additionally, this will show a revised facade elevation. Obviously, the applicant would be willing to work on these elevations based on the board comments and the board professionals' comments. So this elevation certainly is not set in stone. So in the front elevation, you have the Speedwell Avenue facade. On this facade, you have, the only signage is the McDonald's arches. That sign needs relief for the letter height, whereas three point five feet is proposed where two feet in height is permitted. The rear elevation, at the previous hearing, the applicant removed the sign. On the south-facing elevation, the non-drive-through side elevation, the applicant additionally only has the golden arches. That sign will also need relief for the sign height, as well as the square footage. Lastly, the applicant also agreed to remove signage on the Dayton Avenue frontage, where on the Dayton Avenue frontage, you only have the McDonald's letter signing. That sign meets the permitted square footage. However, the applicant is requesting a variance for the letter height. So the relief being requested in relation to signage is from thirteen dash five point eight C. The maximum letter or logo height for wall-mounted signage shall be two feet. The applicant is proposing three and a half feet. This is done to promote visibility for motorists. You'll see similar sign heights with the Chase Bank and the Citizens Bank along Speedwell Avenue. The applicant is also requesting relief from thirteen dash five point eight C one, as in the lighting of signs shall be limited to indirect lighting, spotlighting or backlighting. The applicant is proposing internally lit signage for safety and visibility reasons. Similarly, you'll see at Citizens Bank and Chase Bank, they have internally lit signs. This is certainly in keeping with the established sign pattern on Speedwell Avenue. So the applicant is requesting that relief. Now, the applicant is also requesting relief for the number of freestanding signs, and this is really a technicality because the ordinance does not provide for menu boards in this zoning district. So the applicant is requesting a variance for the quantity of freestanding signs. One freestanding sign is permitted and five are proposed. However, there is only one freestanding sign, which meets the ordinance size limits on Speedwell Avenue. The other four freestanding signs are menu boards for the drive-thru. The mixed-use commercial overlay zone, which is on Route ten, does provide parameters for the menu boards. That zoning district does allow one pre-order and one menu board permitted for the drive-thru lane. The applicant is providing one of each per each drive-thru lane. Additionally, in that zone, the maximum sign area of an ordering menu shall not exceed thirty square feet. The applicant is at nineteen point seven square feet per each menu board sign. Additionally, the maximum sign area for a pre-ordering menu board sign shall not exceed twenty square feet. The applicant is at nine point eight square feet for the pre-ordering sign. So it's certainly within the established limits of ordinance standards for drive-through facilities in other zones. That does trigger a variance for maximum freestanding sign area, where a maximum freestanding sign area of twenty square feet is required, and the cumulative square feet of those five signs is seventy-five point four square feet. As I stated before, the freestanding sign is sixteen square feet. Twenty square feet is permitted by ordinance. So that's certainly within keeping on the ordinance regulations. The B2 district allows for freestanding signs in the front yard only, and the menu board and the pre-order board are in the side yard. So variances required for the freestanding sign locations certainly due to the construction of the ordinance standards, which are not set forth for the B2 zone. The applicant is also requesting freestanding sign material variance. Signs shall be constructed of painted wood, wood-like material or wood appearing material. The applicant is proposing aluminum materials for the sign. The applicant is also requesting a variance for freestanding sign lighting, whereas indirect lighting is required, and the applicant proposes LED and internal lighting. I'm going to introduce Exhibit A eleven, where, you know, if you look at the signage of Citizens Bank, and Chase Bank, the freestanding side, as well as the wall-mounted signs are internally illuminated. That's certainly in keeping with the signage patterns along Speedwell Avenue for corner lots and drive-through type uses. I would also like to note, as you see in the aerial photography, you will not see any loading areas on these sites. The loading area for these sites are all done through the drive aisles within the off-street parking areas. I would like to note that, based on my examination of all the commercial uses along Speedwell Avenue, there is only one user which had a loading dock, and that makes sense. That's the former Acme site. So not having a loading area on a commercial use on Speedwell Avenue is the norm, and it's certainly been able to accommodate the business uses without the use of a loading aid. Lastly, the applicant is requesting some design waivers related to the parking stall size. Ten by twenty feet is required, nine by eighteen square feet is proposed. You've heard in previous testimony that that's the standard parking spot size. There was also a waiver being requested for the striping. Eighteen-inch hairpin striping is required, and single-line striping is proposed. And lastly, there is a design waiver for the screening. An eight-foot fence is proposed where a maximum of six feet is permitted. Now, all those variances that I just mentioned can be granted under the C-two criteria. We're in an application relating to a specific piece of property. Here you have Block twenty-three, lots four and five, a vacant former Friendly's restaurant and office building located in the B2 zoning district. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements. Looking at the purposes of zoning that this proposal advances, it certainly advances Purpose A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of lands and estate in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. You have an elimination of a vacant and underutilized structure. The use, as per the goals and objectives of the master plan, promotes a use resilient to the current economy, furthering the goals of the master plan and zoning ordinance. Additionally, when you look at the parking variance, as well as the loading variance, the reduction in impervious coverage on the site certainly promotes the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. Additionally, the internally lit signing helps minimize any halo impacts from indirect signage. So that creates a safer environment for motorist recognition of the site. Additionally, this promotes Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate location for a variety of commercial uses according to the respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. Obviously, you know, this is a permitted use, and it's appropriate location for the proposed use. In terms of a sufficient space, the applicant is exceeding all the required building setbacks in the district. Lastly, this helps promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design arrangements. There's an extensive landscaping package, which does not exist today, adjacent to the residential neighbor. Additionally, the increased landscape buffer adjacent to Dayton Road will be provided for within this application. So certainly, the increased landscaping package and a new building, which is not abandoned or not being used, certainly promotes a desirable visual environment. Looking at the negative criteria, the benefits of any deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. As I stated in my testimony, all the variances do not create a substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, nor the public good, and there are solid reasons for the granting of such variances. So in conclusion, all the applicant's relief is minimal in nature and certainly could be granted under the C-two criteria, advancing purposes A, G and I of the municipal land use law.
Mr. Graviano, could you just pull up the elevation that you showed initially, please? What's the difference between this and the one we showed originally?
The previous design was very modern in nature with materials that were modern appearing. The applicant strove here to use a siding-like material. Here you'll see it's fiber cement board, which people will commonly know as hardy plank. It's a material used to look like siding that's a little bit more adorable. It's a little bit more aesthetically pleasing in nature. So that was done to create a building that's a little bit more in keeping with the visual environment on Speedwell Avenue.
And the prior rendering was what, dark gray?
It was a dark gray, vertical boards. And this was seeking to create a more traditional appearance.
Okay. Josh, do we have that rendering?
No.
Okay. But we don't have any other further direct questions for this witness.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first question I have actually has to do with the, can you hear me okay? Has to do with the architecture.
Yes.
And, you know, specifically in September, we had talked about brick, and that brick was sort of a prevalent, you know, prominent material, particularly in the larger buildings on Speedwell Avenue. Is there any opportunity to put brick or brick siding in this location?
Yes, the applicant is certainly willing to work with the board on providing additional brick on the facades.
I've got a rendering that we can show you.
Okay.
Yeah, let me just, I'm sending it to him now. Just take one second. Apologize for the delay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Madam, you can take some more questions while we're getting this over.
All right, thank you. The next question has to do with the loading space. So is it your testimony that even if you had, let's say, a site twice as large, there would still be no loading space?
As you heard in the traffic engineer's testimony, none of the current prototypes are being designed with loading spaces. So even if this site was larger, the applicant would not be providing loading space.
So a related question is if there are not, you know, it's not their practice, McDonald's practice, to provide a loading space, is there any opportunity to not have deliveries by tractor-trailer?
That would be a question I'd have to discuss with the applicant. But I think you heard in testimony that the two, the very modest two deliveries at forty-five minutes a week are done through tractor-trailer.
Now, I know you're providing the landscaping buffer along the eastern edge, and you're providing some additional landscaping along Dayton. There is, since you've moved the driveway north, it can, you provide additional landscaping sort of in the northeast corner of the site that's across from a residence, so that in doing that, it would potentially help block any headlight layer that would be coming from cars circulating through the site.
The applicant would certainly be willing to provide additional landscaping.
Okay. My next question has to do with the...there was information in the application about signs on Bollards. Is that still being proposed? And if so, what are they?
Those are directional signs for the drive-through lanes. They say any lane, any time, they guide the motorists in the drive-through lanes. I would certainly classify them as directional signs.
Okay. And do you, for the record, do you have the posed square footage of that?
They're less than two square feet.
Okay, all right. Madam Chair, those are my only questions at the moment. Thank you.
And we're going to pull this image up for you in a minute.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Garrett, please.
I do have a question. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right. I think you had mentioned in what you just provided, was it McDonald's on Route 1? Is that where you talk about traffic, sixty thousand cars? Is that...
I provided a reference to the McDonald's in Rowway, Oklahoma, one and nine.
And then you said about a third of that, or twenty thousand, with the Speedway? The amount of traffic running on Speedway?
No, what my testimony was, the traffic engineer provided the most busy McDonald's that he had data on. It was a restaurant that was two thousand square feet larger than what we're proposing on a highway with three times the traffic. Their max parking demand was thirty off-street parking spaces, whereas we're providing thirty-two in this application.
Right, so three times the traffic, and you said about sixty thousand cars.
Three times the traffic in a restaurant that is two thousand square feet larger didn't even need the parking that we're providing with this application.
Right, but again, three times the traffic, and I think you said sixty thousand. So here, your ideal, and your planning here, is telling me that you're assuming twenty thousand cars on Speedway.
No, that's the DOD traffic plan, that there's twenty thousand vehicles in either direction.
Okay. Okay.
So there's not sixty thousand patients at the other end?
Not. No, we're showing that in a location that has three times the traffic, that's two thousand square feet bigger, requires thirty off-street parking spaces. We're providing thirty-two in a restaurant that's two thousand square feet smaller in a location that has far less traffic. So what we're highlighting is that the off-street parking lot requiring a variance from the municipality zoning code is adequate to meet the needs of the facility.
Right, and my focus was more on the traffic, even though your focus was on parking, mine was more on what you said about traffic. So three times the amount is what I heard?
At the application, yes.
Okay, all right. And then, the only other question I have is that Liz, to you. So do any of these requested variances that the applicant is asking about base center new precedent for our...
Almost as I said at almost every hearing that, right, that each case rises and falls on its own merits. And so there really is no precedent set in. Every case where they're seeking a variance, they're going to have to make their case. And the board, whether it be you or the zoning board, can approve or not approve based on the particular characteristics of the site, its location, its context, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, just want to be clear. Thank you.
Mr. Beasley?
My questions are common. Since the property is so big and you're way within your setbacks, was there any thought about making the parking lot bigger to accommodate the tractor-trailer coming in? And for the trucks that's going to come in for the disposal and to empty the grease trap? Like, it just seems like there could be a lot of trucks coming in there at any given time, and to me, the parking lot just seems too small for all that.
You've heard nights of testimony on how this parking lot works. It's my position that the applicant's relief being requested is not a substantial impairment to the zoning plan or zoning ordinance. You've heard two licensed engineers describe how this site works and why it works. So I'm comfortable that these variances being requested do not create a substantial detriment to the zoning plan, zoning ordinance, or the public good.
Hi, thank you very much. My question is about the illuminated signs, and I don't know, Liz, maybe this might go to you as well. So on the illumination of the signs, are...do they, the ones on the side of the building, I'm not talking about the board signage, do they dim after it's closed for the evening, or they remain constantly on?
The applicant would be willing to shut them off.
Okay. And then, secondarily, and maybe this is where Liz, with what you're recommending, is that similar in brightness to what's already at Chase and your Citizens? Is it the same? Is it brighter? Where does it fall on that spectrum?
I don't have the data on the illumination for those signs, but, you know, the reason I show those other signs is to show that there are internally illuminated signs on Speedway Avenue. They certainly haven't created havoc, you know, on the public, and, you know, they're aesthetically pleasing, but the applicant certainly would be willing to work with the board professionals on illumination levels that is acceptable.
Okay. And then, just confirmation, that you did say that the menu boards do dim after hour. They would be turned off, or they dim after hours, or how does that...
I didn't speak to that effect, but in previous hearings, the applicant will be shutting those boards off. It does make sense to run them on the stores on the operation.
That's it, for me.
Okay, go ahead.
With the requirements for granting a variance, you don't meet the requirement for hardship, I believe. Both of the existing sites are actually viable, operable sites, is that true?
We didn't set forth a C1 argument for this application. We set forth the C2 standard, whereas hardship may not be demonstrated. What must be demonstrated, that it relates to a specific piece of property. Here you have an underutilized site where the applicant's before the board would have permitted use. So there's certainly advancements of the purposes of zoning of the municipal land use law, as I went through it, purposes A, G, and I. And I certainly feel that there is no substantial impairment to the zoning plan or zoning ordinance is what the request of these variances.
But technically, both of those sites actually could be operable. It's just a question about how much can you charge for the Friendly's site, and what can you charge as far as the rent? So really, what you're talking about, the motivation on this, is that you can possibly make more money by combining the two sites and putting McDonald's. Is that fair, exactly?
No, that's not fair whatsoever. We heard nothing about financial considerations in my testimony. I gave the proofs why variances can be granted in this scenario.
But you didn't answer my question. Technically, both of those sites can stand alone and be operable. Can they not?
Anything's possible.
So technically, you don't meet the hardship?
I didn't ask for hardship.
Now, with regard to the detriment or benefit to the town, the overwhelming testimony of all of the residents here, and what I understand is twelve hundred people on Facebook and have signed a petition and stuff, that it does represent a detriment to the community. Some of your information with regard to the traffic study seems to be biased, and you seem to ignore some of the questions as I spread the testimony over the last two meetings. You're not addressing it directly. How much additional property would you need in order to comply with all of our requirements and need no variances?
Before you answer that, the Facebook post is not admissible in this hearing. I just want to make that clear for the record. None of that information, that is all hearsay, and unless those people here testify, that means nothing, so go ahead.
I retract that. I only add that, I think you were the one that made the comment that more plans seem to think they're too good for McDonald's. I kind of take offense to that.
I never said that. You can make this application about me and making an ad hominem attack against me all you want, but if you want to talk about the merits, we could talk about the merits. Your attorney will advise you that Facebook posts are not admissible. So unless you have law to show me, sir, that's the law.
I retract that. I'm not arguing with you. Why are you trying to argue with me?
Because you mischaracterize what I said about this community. I never said that.
Yes, you did.
I never said this community thinks it's too good for anyone. Never. You want that.
One second. I'm going to call a three-second pause here. Let's see, we can go back to questioning the witness. I'll give it a shot. How much additional property would you need to comply with all of our requirements?
We're providing testimony on the application before the board. We provided the variance justifications for the site that the applicant has been able to assemble.
Would it be fair to say you probably would need the Duncan Donald's site in order to comply with all of our requirements?
I'm not going to answer questions on a hypothetical scenario.
Well, again, I don't think you meet the requirements as far as the detriment or benefit to the town based on the testimony of the residents. I don't think their questions have been adequately answered. I think there's safety issues with regard to traffic. I think the potential for forcing traffic along mountainway and all of the side streets is only enhanced by your proposed application that is technically is undersized. You don't have the adequate property to meet what you're trying to propose.
Is that the question, sir? What is the question?
The question is, do you agree what I said?
No, and this is not public comment or deliberations. You're asking questions, not making speeches. That's not what this time is for.
I think I'm allowed to represent the town.
I'm just making a point.
Can you say the actual square footage of the dining area for this restaurant?
I have to get that. I know the whole building is two thousand feet, the dining area.
Sorry. I took that one. Well, I used to look, and I have a couple of if you want. The lighting on the menu signs, which way do they face, obviously? They face the cars as they're coming in? There be any other illumination off the side or not?
No, they face the cars in the drive-through lane. That's the only method of illumination on the side.
Can you give us a size comparison, like Chase's size, I think it was there before, to what you're proposed for the standing sign on Speedway? And again, for the ones on the side? Just as a comparison.
The letter heights, the letter height on the freestanding sign, the size consistent with Chase, was it, if you get a tape measure up there, they were consistent. With respect to the freestanding sign, the applicant's not requesting relief for the size of that sign. That's within ordinance limits. It's actually four square feet smaller than it could be.
I have just as a comparison. Just as a comparison, driving up and down the avenue, what...
Yeah, I've had a chance to be on Speedway Avenue, probably about ten different occasions now, I certainly think that the proposed freestanding sign is in keeping with the established development pattern, and not only that, the size is in keeping with the ordinance.
I know it brought up about dimming the menu board, the signage on the facade, and also we dim during off-hours.
The applicant has agreed to turn the signage off.
That's it for right now. And you have the answer to that question?
There are still research. Thank you.
The freestanding sign, is that going to be similar to the one that Friendly has?
The freestanding sign is going to be similar, yet smaller than what Chase's is.
But it's going to be raised up, right?
No, it's a monument sign. It's on the ground. It has a lease.
Okay. And so this leads me to my next question. On that side, you have a full McDonald's. And I think I would ask that you just put an M there and not the McDonald's. Put an M there and not the McDonald's, since you have already a freestanding sign. You don't need double.
Well, I hope we don't catch heck for this afterwards, but the applicant would be willing to just provide the M sign on the side of the building.
Can we, is there a way we could lower the light just so everyone can... It's important to see the size of this, because this is the brick facade that comes up with the side like three-quarters up. You just can't really see it.
Gentlemen, I do have a question.
Man, that's actually the best view you could get. The brick is on both sides, and you can see it's about three-quarter up the side of the building, and then the wood in the front on the corners. That's what we were talking about this morning. Thank you, appreciate it.
That would be A12.
So I saw one of them.
Mike, too.
I'm sorry. Mike. Are you finished, Frank? And it appeared to be... Okay. It appeared to be like all, I'm talking about the one on... It's a dark gray brick.
Yes. According to the McDonald's people, that has undergone a couple different renovations, and so it's not really their...
Okay.
Yeah.
Chairwoman, I would like to note that I know McDonald's you're referring to, except I don't deep on some of these. That's actually stucco.
Oh, it's stucco?
Yeah, the top is stucco, the base is brick. The base of the brick is only like, probably like this tall. Here you would have like seventy-five percent of facade being brick. This is actually nicer than that one.
Thank you. And when you say brick, it's really brick, it's not the stucco that's made to look like brick? Well, whatever, it's going to look like.
It'll look like brick, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, question I was gonna talk with is, see, four menu signs, two for menu and two for orders. Can we make a menu sign singular or have it shared by both lanes?
No, it's just, that's not the way it works. There is the pre-order menu, and then there's the menu board for both lanes. The, the menu board's either angled at the lane, so.
For viewability?
Yes. But as I noted, the applicant's size for both the menu ordering board and the pre-order board are 10 feet, 10 square feet under what you have in the overlay zone on Route 10.
Liz, do you have any more questions?
Okay. Okay, so, so, so we need to go to the public, and first of all, we'll go to the public.
Okay. Do you want me to just go quickly?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your testimony. So I just want to go over a couple things and have, ask you a couple questions here. Uh, so you mentioned the master plan, like if this is in conformant to the master plan, which, are you referring to the 2018 one?
That's correct.
And when you're talking about the retail with the online shopping and things like that, um, because I have it in front of me, and I've just seen that they're referring to departure of large corporations and regional trends in the office market. Is that what you're referring to?
I'm referring to the master plan's goal to provide, provide commercial land uses which are online shopping resilient, as well as the verbiage in ordinance 14 dash 2023, which highlights the master plan's committee efforts to develop land uses that are consistent and recommended in the 2018 master plan reexamination, whereas that recommendation therefore amended the B2 district to provide drive-through restaurants, um, along this section of Speedwell Avenue.
Okay. Um, in your opinion, I mean, as we know, I mean, I'm practicing the land use law for 13 years, not as much as you, right? But, uh, just because something is allowed in a zoning district doesn't mean, I mean, if it was, you would meet all these sort of variants, you wouldn't meet all these variances. And the fact, so you could still, just because it's allowed doesn't mean that it's the best place for it. Now, going forward with that, because I heard all the comments of like, what would you do? Could you expand with the parking and things like that, which you did, but it mentioned. But I want to go focus on, you know, what you refer to as a criteria for the purposes of the MLUL regarding A and G here. Um, and specifically also the master plan as well, because one of the things that they bring up on the master plan, I'm sure you read it a bunch, and I only know this, I, look, I came in because my cousin was in therapy.
Is there a question here?
Yes, there is a question, there is a question. How could, so, one of the biggest things that they say here is about pedestrians, pedestrians, and they want to make sure, and I'll refer you to the page right now, that they're going to have adequate parking spaces for all the different uses, and as well as they kept on giving pedestrian safety, school safety, walking schools. And one of the great parts about Marsh Plains is that, I mean, I've never seen a place where you would have kids walking home for school. So how are you meeting those, uh, those guidelines for the master plan? Providing proficient spaces of parking and loading zones, special appropriate areas, and also as far, as far as pedestrian safety? How are you meeting those?
The applicant has sent forth numerous nights of testimony regarding the pedestrian safety and the pedestrian safety improvements that will be accomplished on, on Speedwell Avenue. And, you know, and as...
I mean, I'm, I'm asking you right now, I understand the...
Let me, let me bring the order.
Okay.
One person at a time, if she's asking a question, better finish. If he's providing testimony, please, better finish. Second clause, because we have a transcript.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to add, the applicant is providing pedestrian safety improvements on Speedwell Avenue. Furthermore, I'd like to note that there's numerous case law, including the seminal Duncan Donuts versus North Brunswick, where the board certainly does not have the authority to prohibit or eliminate uses generating traffic. Um, it's, that's an exercise of zoning power vested in the municipal governing body. This municipal governing body has permitted this use on site via an extension of an exhaustive review of, of the master plan and zoning ordinance, where two separate actions were taken to permit this use on site. So while the, the public has safety concerns, this applicant's professional certainly has provided testimony to alleviate those concerns, and it's certainly not within the board's purview to deny an application on, on those concerns.
Okay. The other question I have for you, because I'm going back to the parking spaces as well for the parking, um, length as well here. So you're asking for thirty, to permit 32 parking spaces. That's including, um, two electrical vehicles, ADA spaces for 41s required, as well as nine-by-18 space. So how many employees, I think they said, what, 10 to 15 employees there? So you're getting to, what, about 14 parking spots that are undersized, is that correct?
Testimony was set forth that the quantity and design of the parking area was adequate to meet the functionality of the restaurant. So based on the determination of two separate professional engineers who have extensive experience in designing McDonald's, data was set forth that the parking supply, as well as the design of the parking, is adequate to meet the needs of this restaurant.
Okay. Um, as far as the appropriate one, too, in your view, because we're across the street from middle school, right? And not only that you're going to have cars there, but also buses, kids walking, and I'm sure a lot of people drive minivans. In your opinion, does minivans fit into a nine-by-18 spot?
Yes, they do.
Will there be enough space for someone to come, to go out and say, put in their car seat, things like that?
The applicant's engineers have testified that the nine-by-18 space is adequate to meet the needs of this restaurant.
In your opinion, though, uh, for what you see, have you ever done one of these drive-throughs across from school?
There are numerous McDonald's within the vicinity of schools, yes.
But across the street?
This is a permitted use, we do not have to justify the inclusion of this use. The applicant is not before...
But you have to justify all the other variances, sir.
Let me, let me... This is a permitted use, the governing body has deemed this site appropriate for such use. The applicant is not before the zoning board having to demonstrate particular suitability, nor the enhanced burden approved. This is a permitted use. This application is not only reviewed by this board and the board's professionals, but also the DOT. There's numerous layers of review, so yes, this is a safe, uh, situation for the surrounding community.
Okay. So when you're referring to that this is safe, and they've gone through all these sort of things, and you're saying that, well, it's allowed for this use to be here, right? And that, therefore, you, it doesn't matter, the bulk variance is. So in your opinion, even if, say, uh, you know, if their bulk variances don't matter, why are you asking for them if this site is deemed to be appropriate here? That there's plenty of places in the B2 and things of that sort?
Well, first of all, there aren't plenty of spaces in the B2. There are seven lots in the B2, to be exact. I don't have that issue. Uh, furthermore, certainly within the applicant's right on the municipal land use law to request C variances in conjunction with preliminary and final site plan approval. Uh, the applicant's professionals have provided the justifications for the granting of those variances, and in agreement that there's no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the granting of such variances.
So, but we're talking about, but you have to prove right now that there's no substantial detriment, correct?
Yes.
Right? So when you're talking about that, and you're saying that this, because this area was zoned for this particular use, does, um, then any sort of drive-through? Because, let's be honest, McDonald's is not the only drive-through company. You can have Starbucks, I mean, it would be a great location for Shake Shack. I'm just biased because I like their burgers. But, you know, when we're talking about this, and you're talking about substantial detriment, here, what I'm trying to ask you is that, how, you're, you're still repeating this, and you're referring to the different experts here, but I feel like you still haven't answered the question, because you're referring to it, how is this going towards the kids with pedestrian safety? When you're talking about, and even going back to the design standards for this, you're mentioning about the Chase bank. Can you put that Chase bank picture up there, please? Put it. Is that a bigger lot than the McDonald's one with a ton of parking?
I'm not gonna answer questions that are subjective.
Well, I'm, we're all looking at right now, it's obviously a much bigger lot than what you're referring to.
Actually, that lot has less parking than McDonald's is proposing.
I mean, it's a huge lot, and also banks require less. You're referring to also the loading zone. I mean, from what I understand, for banks, they just have armored trucks, is that correct? They don't really have 18-wheelers.
Objection, relevance to...
I mean, I'm asking about, you're, you guys made a comparison that this is like a bank, and that's why you don't need a loading zone, because everywhere else has no loading zone because there's a bank. The banks don't have it, you don't need it. But the banks don't have 18-wheelers coming.
Actually...
While during the same time, you're gonna have buses there for school buses. I'm talking about that, you're showing me this as proven, that's why this is relevant. But I'm gonna defer to, uh, Council Brewer on this, if it's for the relevance here, because if you mentioned the Chase bank, there is a question here.
Yeah, there's, there's a question to answer.
Firstly, I, I utilized the Chase bank to, uh, compare the signage, as well as the fact that this ordinance requires a loading zone for every use, uh, in the district, as well as the other districts on Speedwell Avenue. The only building with a loading zone is, is the former Acme site, which is rational to have on a building of that square footage and a supermarket. Loading zones are not existent on Speedwell Avenue for buildings of this size. Additionally, all of the uses due to loading through the drive-by or within the market. So this, this use is no exception to that scenario.
Okay. Uh, so I'm looking again at this Chase lot, and I'm also looking at the sign here right now, too. Uh, do you think that these are muted colors? I mean, the blue is kind of big like that, but I see the rest of it is white. And, you know, we're talking about, Leonard, I know this sounds silly, but I was looking at great pictures of the Tucson, I think it was in Arizona, where they had blue signage. One of the things that are particular, and you read the 2018 master plan again, they say particularly muted colors. Are you guys open to creating, to buy and buy the muted colors?
The applicant's requesting the signage provided with the application with the modifications granted to the board to eliminate numerous facade-mounted signs in the building. Um, you have the very modest, uh, yellow arches, which I would say are muted, and you have the red freestanding arches sign on the, on the corner, which is in keeping with the freestanding signages of the bank that are on Speedwell.
Can I see the picture of the freestanding sign, please?
Sorry, to use the, to, 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 to the touchscreen, but... That's the freestanding sign.
Okay, so how big is that sign? The...
The sign is, the sign is four by four.
Four feet by four feet?
Yes.
For, on the front, you're saying for the same as the Chase bank?
No, I'm not saying it's the same as the Chase bank. I've said that it was the same in terms of the method of illumination.
For the illumination, but the colors are much different. I mean, white colors are different than the red and yellow, is that correct?
That is correct.
And white would be considered muted tones, correct? Which are in alliance with the master plan?
Yes, I would say so.
Okay, would they be, would McDonald's be open to changing the sign?
To make it a white sign?
To make it muted colors and to work with...
No. We're not doing that, it's McDonald's. McDonald's has a universal sign, it's red and yellow, why would we make a white sign?
Because you're asking for a variance.
Okay, yeah, and we'll stick by it, we want the variance.
So what is the benefit, like, what's the benefit for the community for you having a red and yellow sign?
Because everyone recognizes it, that's why you know it's McDonald's.
The, the benefit to the community is...
That's it, you're not allowed to advance...
He's entering.
The benefit to the community is the visibility of the fact that there is McDonald's on the site. So that sign promotes visibility, which enhances, uh, motorists and pedestrian safety.
I would, um, it seems like that would advance, only merely advance the purposes of the owner to see that.
No, I, I think there's a strong...
Which you're not allowed to have. You have to prove that you are not merely advancing the applicant. What is the benefit for the residents here? And what is the benefit for the residential? People that have to stare at this red and yellow sign.
As I stated previously, you know, when it comes to a C2 variance, yes, the applicant needs to demonstrate that there are purposes other than its own purposes being advanced. I certainly think that motorists and pedestrian safety with clear recognition of the site does provide a public purpose.
Sure, but there's a white sign for Chase Bank, and they're in muted colors. Why is McDonald's requesting the red and yellow for a variance, then? If you could change the colors?
The white and blue is part of the Chase Bank branding color scheme.
Sure, but... Okay. Uh, but you're aware that there's different McDonald's all over the place that make customs and adjustments to the places that they are in, notably like the one in Long Island, for example, that there can be concessions here?
The applicant has made numerous concessions on the site in terms of signage, including eliminating the McDonald's identification sign on Dayton Avenue that was 32 square feet. Now it's been reduced to a 14-square-foot, uh, golden arches. And that sign is permitted by ordinance. The applicant is permitted on that front edge to have 50 square feet of signage. The applicant is actually only proposing 32 square feet of signage. Now the applicant is proposing 14 square foot of signage. The applicant has also redo, eliminated other signs on the building. So the applicant has made numerous concessions to this board and community with the reduction of signage on site.
Sure, but concessions to the community do not equal benefits to the community when you create your own hardship. Isn't that correct?
The applicant's not creating its own hardship. The applicant is using a color scheme which is part of its nationally recognized branding program. Additionally, the applicant's removal of byright signage, which is permitted by the zoning ordinance, to appease the board, that, that's certainly going a long way towards serving the community. I'm sure there's concerns about the signage on Dayton Avenue. The applicant has eliminated the signage to a very modest yellow golden arches of 14 square feet.
But we're going over right now the variances that you're requesting for signage. I'm looking at right now, we're 75.4 square feet, where the maximum is allowed 20 square feet. I'm also looking the fact that you're asking for to print a freestanding sign for aluminum material, red or yellow in color, where they have to be constructed with painted wood, wood-like or wood period, uh, material, and shall be dull and matte and finished colors with contrasting colors for lettering and other message elements. I'm also looking at the other variances that you're asking for signage. So you just told me that you guys are compliant with the signs, ordinance, but you're asking for all these variances. So I'm gonna ask you again, for the internal lighting and different elements for that, because I drove through it, and I don't recall seeing Chase abutting so many residential properties here. So I'm going to ask you again, with the signage here, uh, for all these different ordinances, which you said that you guys are compliant to, and you're making revisions on the benefit of the community for something that you created yourself. So again, with this, what is the benefit for all these signs?
Asked and answered a couple times now.
Certainly, I, I would like to add that we listed, point by point, the variances being requested with this application for signage. At no point did I say we were fully compliant with the signage. I said that we were removing permitted signs at great square footage to accommodate the request.
Okay. The other question is, during your testimony, you mentioned about the menu signs were freestanding. You said it was allowed in another zone, what was the zoning district for that?
That was a mixed-use commercial use overlay zone.
Overlay zone, is this in the mixed-use overlay zone?
No, however, this zone... No, however, this zone did not provide requirements for the menu boards for permitted use. I utilize that as comparison to show that the applicant's request is in keeping with other zoning districts which permit menu board, and the applicant is actually far less in square footage than what those zones permit.
But again, this is not the mixed-use zone for overlay. So I'm gonna go on to the next one. Because you're asking again for these menus and as well as the relief from the parking. So now I'm gonna ask you more about the parking here. So when you're at, in your hand, do you see any other setback variances that are required here? Do we need any other variances here? Especially for things like fencing, or why can't the McDonald's, why can't the applicant put some more buffering to fencing around for Dayton Ave? That's required. What is the reason for that?
The applicant's not requesting a variance for fencing on Dayton Ave.
Not the fencing, I'm sorry. I'm gonna go along here. It says, you wanna permit or limit the screening for off-street parking along the front yard facing for Dayton Ave? Where this is why, where you're supposed to have either fencing, wall landscaping, and facing premises situated in residential zones, near any residential zones. As you could see, when I was driving right next to it, you could see that the Dunkin' Donuts adjacent to it does comply with that, from my understanding. So you're asking for the variance here, and why can't that be met?
I'm not familiar with the variance that the objecting attorneys referring to, the applicant submitted to the board. A very extensive and very comprehensive landscaping package that provides screening not only to the residential neighborhood, but also along Dayton Ave.
I'm referring to Section thirteen dash fourteen, I'm sorry, dash four point fourteen C2F. It says that you're supposed to screen the situated that are near residential zones.
The variance in that context is to provide an actual fence that's larger than what's required by ordinance to provide additional screening to the neighborhood.
Sure, but you, there's two, since this is a corner lot, there's two front yards, correct? There's one on Dayton, and there's one at Speedway.
I'm not aware of any relief being required for the landscaping being imposed on Dayton Ave.
But I'm reading the variance, I'm reading it right now, what's required here. So maybe this is a question for the planner, for the municipal planner?
I think that the municipal planners look at it, if you have, if you do have a planner that's...
Yeah, I believe that they did mention that, too.
I think that would be the more appropriate time.
Sure, that...
Please, I'm sorry. If there, the applicant's witnesses do not believe and feel their opinion is wrong, that should be required by the board, if you have testimony from an expert, that's probably the appropriate time to that issue.
Sure, I believe that they put that on their notice as well for that variance, so I'm just confused myself.
You know, I don't feel that this variance is necessary. However, given the extensive landscaping package that the applicant has provided, I certainly think any potential relief could be granted under the C2 criteria for purposes A, G, and I, without substantial impairment to the zone or zoning ordinance, as would the other variances that would be applied.
For Dayton Ave?
Yes, there is a very extensive landscaping package on Dayton Ave.
Can I see it, please? Can I see where you're gonna put the landscaping, please? That's the landscaping for the details for the Dayton Ave and then also the front, correct?
That's right.
That's all we wanted to see with that. And so are we still asking for the variance for that, because it's put on here with it? Is that also going to be enough screening for the people across the street on Dayton Ave that have residential homes?
Yes, I feel it does a comprehensive screening package.
Okay. That, it wouldn't, a lot of times, I'm sure you're aware, too, is that the buffers especially are always... For being adjacent to residential areas, especially with the giant M on there and a red and yellow sign, would be distracting for any sort of residential. So I'm very pleased that you're going to shut the sign off at appropriate time. But can you just remind me what are the hours for McDonald's? And when, so we can know when that sign's gonna be shut off, please?
Hours are six to eleven.
Hours six to eleven? So, and then when does it start up again? When does it open? So six AM to eleven, and then it starts again at six?
Yes.
When does the sign will get turned on, only at six to eleven, and that's it?
Yes.
Okay. And for the internal lighting of it, because it produces such a glare for that, do you find that that buffer and that landscaping is going to be sufficient enough to block that light from the residential properties?
Asked and answered. He said it was, he said he believed it was a sufficient package, so...
It was sufficient?
That's his answer.
Okay. Because the other thing I'd say, that is one of the intentions and the reason why they limit the internal signage is because of these glare issues. It's because of that light that's going into the residential property, as opposed to goose neck lighting that people do. Would you be open to doing goose neck lighting instead of having internally lit signs?
No, the applicant's requesting the internal illumination. Goose neck lighting actually provides the glare that we're referring to, and internal illumination does not.
Yeah, so when like goose, I'm sure you understand when the goose neck lighting is there, it goes directly to it. That's why they allow it in historic districts and not internalized lighting. So in my opinion, that's incorrect for you, but whatever, for that. So in your opinion, you're saying that goose neck lighting and something that is not internally lit, that's off the table?
Yes.
So what is the benefit again for having that internally lit sign? Because one of the issues, I'm sure you're aware of, again, of these cases, is that while it does provide, you know, showing where that sign is for pedestrians and for people for traffic, it also has to alleviate the hazards, the traffic hazards, for seeing those signs all across.
Mr. Brewer, how many times am I gonna answer the same question?
The internally lit sign, these are different, sir.
I've answered the question about the internally lit sign, and you gave me the answer. It's a safer situation for site identification for motorists, and it reduces the glare that you often find with externally illuminated lights.
So your position is, again, you're saying that this is somehow, that this is a substantial benefit? That there's not gonna be any detriments regarding the sign, and there would not be a difference in this if you were to just have the sign being compliant. Is that correct? Okay, I just wanted to get that straight here. And I also wanted to ask you as well regarding for the variances, because we're going to have Mr. Speck to say, I just want to confirm here, there's no other variances that you identified. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I would like the public to have a chance to also ask questions as well as I can be with our own expert, so that there's enough time. So right now, I'm going to conclude for my questioning, so that way we have enough time for Peter Speck to be able to present. We're trying to get everything in. One of the questions, the reason why I'm asking about the variances, because we identified a bunch of different variances that are not in there. So he's going to elaborate that, without a planner. So at this note, I just want to make sure that everybody else has enough time, so I'm going to, you know, we'll get to that in a minute.
Pardon me? Yes, nine o'clock, we'll take a break, but Andy, do you want to mention what we talked about before as far as...
Well, what I... Yeah, the people that, and I think there's only a few, that is whom are represented. They can't ask questions, I think we made that clear. There are other members of the public who are not represented by her are free to ask questions on the planning testimony that was given.
I hate to throw a little complication into the mix, but that's my job. I believe there was a significant fundraising campaign that occurred here through GoFundMe, maybe some other ways. So it's our position that anyone who gave money to fund this attorney's work also should not be allowed to testify, because they are funding this attorney's case. That's my position, and so I would appreciate if anyone who has contributed, when they get up to the microphone, that they should identify themselves as a contributor, and we will object to them providing testimony.
That's fine. I'm only people that hired me with this. I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity that are not represented by me, and I have no idea who took this GoFundMe, to be honest with you, I had no idea that that's how they pay me. I was just retained today. We'll ask that question, I think, then, and then we'll just step back up.
Speaking of that, as Mr. Brewer explained before, he has looked up the regulations, and we are allowed to limit the amount of time that each witness is going to ask a question. So it's going to be five minutes, and we are going to give you a thirty-minute warning.
Thirty seconds.
I mean, thirty-second warning. Yes, absolutely.
Can I add something to that? I think that the idea of that is to make sure all the questions that are raised and when necessary come out. If five people come up, and that's it, it's probably gonna be eight people to re-ask questions. If eighteen people come up and each take five minutes, you're gonna get to the end of the night. Or twenty-six people come up and ask five minutes, you're gonna get to the end of the night. And that's what it is, it's just making sure that everybody gets a chance and it just doesn't go into six more meetings, if that's not necessary. As long as all the issues will come up. That's, please, please, there's one person up at a time. We really can't ask that much, Mr. Brewer.
What regulation is that?
Can we ask a question if we donated, or if we're not asking here?
We're going to ask if you've donated, and if you have, you can ask the question.
If you donate, you cannot ask the question.
Correct. That's Mr. Vittola's position.
Go hit yourself. Get comfortable.
Okay, thank you. Okay, state your name and address, please, for the record, and that you have not contributed to any fund that...
Yeah, I would agree with you. Respectfully, I don't think it's fair whether I have hired or not.
I'm not asking you whether it's fair or not. These are the parameters that we set here.
What if it was anonymous, how are you ever gonna know?
Well, then we're not, but we're asking for you to give us...
I have not.
Okay.
I have not, and I respectfully disagree that five minutes is enough time.
That's fine.
That on the record, I think that's okay.
Okay, that's fine.
You referenced the master plan and the detriment to the community. Do drive-throughs enhance or deter from walkability in town? This drive-through has no impact on the walkability of the town. How do you, how can you say that? It doesn't create any pedestrian problems off-site. Does it increase walking traffic to the restaurant? It could potentially, yes. Does it encourage people to drive-through instead of walking? It provides for drive-through facilities. Are you aware of any studies that exist about how drive-throughs negatively impact the walkability of the downtown? This is a permitted use, sir. The applicant is before the board with a permitted use that allows for drive-through facilities. If you would, are you aware of any studies that exist? I'm sure there's studies on the subject. They're not relevant in this case, though. It's a permitted use, as I stated previously. The applicant's not justifying the use variance before the zoning board. The zoning ordinance and the master plan has deemed the site appropriate for this use. In the master plan, and this is a question hopefully you can educate me, when it comes to this particular variance about a drive-through and a drive-up, is there any distinguishing between the two? There's no variance for the drive-through. In the master plan, it specifically states retail pharmacy drive-throughs and drive-up restaurants. Is there a difference? I just want to find the exact terminology, because I know what you're referring to. I would like my time back, as we take time to answer. I think it's page seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, so no, item thirteen. Page eighteen of the master plan posted on our website. Now I'm looking at the, the ordinance refers to drive-through. So I can read it from here, if you don't mind? Just a question. Ordinance number eight dash two thousand and fourteen, it's now changed prohibited uses to permit retail pharmacy uses with drive-through facilities and drive-up restaurants. They are two distinct terms next to each other. You're referencing the wrong ordinance. You ordered the governing, the ordinance governing this use is ordinance fourteen dash two thousand and twenty-three. This is what's posted on our websites for the town. Sir, you have the wrong ordinance. All right, I'm telling you that this is what's posted. I'm telling you, I appreciate that. Do drive-throughs at or idling vehicles create positive impact to the environment in the town, or are they negative? It's not a broken question. It's a drive-through, where seventy percent of their vehicles are sitting in line for up to five minutes each. On average, about eight to a thou, eight hundred to a thousand vehicles per day. Is that a positive environmental impact or negative? It's not the applicant's duty to justify a permitted use. You're asking for variances, whether they apply to our town and whether it creates a positive impact. The variance has nothing to do with the presence of a drive-through. I'm sorry, say that again? The variances have nothing to do with the actual presence of a drive-through, with your reference to idling vehicles. The variances you are requesting, related to the master plan, require you to prove that they are a positive impact to the town, correct? No, the applicant is required to show that there's no substantial impairment to the zone or zoning ordinance, which you've heard nights of testimony that there is not. You mentioned earlier, there's no other, other than the applicant's site, that there's no other location that has a loading? I believe General Plumbing Supply does, which is probably the most active of all the properties on Speedway. Is that correct? Are you aware of that? I'm not aware of that, but I went through many, you know, the majority of all the uses on Speedway Avenue. I did not personally see a loading zone. Do any of the other sites on Speedway Avenue that you've referenced generate roughly a thousand train stations a day? That you're aware of, I'm sorry. I'm not aware of the traffic down at the various uses, but the code requires loading zones for any use, and this area has demonstrated that commercial businesses can exist without substantive detriment to the public good without loading zones. Is McDonald's an experiential location? Do they provide experience when going to McDonald's? Yes.
That's, that's fine, I can have a care.
What is the experience? I'd like to finish the question. The master plan requests that...
You asked, what was the experience? That's the question. We're fine with that.
The master plan committee indicated that this use was a use that creates an experience, and as, you know, how many kids have a birthday party at McDonald's? You know, there is experience to be had at McDonald's. Thank you for your time.
I just want to stress, I want to stress again to the public, if there's, the idea is to have a reasonable way to get all the issues and for all the public to get there, not to arbitrarily limit them. So if there's legitimate time and sufficient time, there'll be time for more questions. But if this goes on for three hours and all of these issues get addressed, that's what this is about. But if this goes on for three hours and all of these issues get addressed, that's what this is about. Not mine, to limit all the questions coming out. It's giving everybody a chance to speak.
Your name and address, please?
Jamie Potkalesky, thirty-one Row Avenue.
And you have not contributed to the fund for...
I have not contributed to the...
Okay.
Thank you. Were any other sites within Morris Plains considered for the McDonald's? Is that something we've heard the last couple of months?
The applicant's duty to provide testimony for variances does not require proof that there are other suitable sites for this proposed use.
Are there other zones in town that we require less variances than what you're asking for?
The applicant's application is for this.
Joseph Sierra, eleven Dayton Road. And my husband may have contributed to the GoFundMe, but it was for signs. It was not for a specific lawyer use. So I'm not sure why anybody that donated to a general fund is now not allowed to speak. And ask questions.
Was your husband not you that asked questions?
My name might be listed, I don't know how it is.
You got a license.
Okay. So you said you have read the master plan numerous times?
Yes.
Okay. Did you read the community's vision statement?
Yes.
Could you reference any of it?
I don't recall at all the time.
Okay, I can read it for you. The community vision statement. It is an outreach process, communicated a vision statement for the borough, which is its focus. Morris Plains is a safe, healthy, and vibrant small town and welcomes a diverse cross-section of residents, visitors, and businesses with a focus on accessibility, sustainability, affordability, cultural enhancement, and educational excellence. The borough seeks innovative and sustainable solutions to mitigate the impacts of future developments on its roadways and infrastructure. And, most importantly, maintain the small-town character of Morris Plains, which has made it a desirable place to live. Do you think the world's largest fast-food corporation double-drive-through fits to that plan to maintain a small-town character of a town?
Yes, I do.
Okay. That was a question.
I do believe that, but I don't have to believe that because the municipality believes that. It's in the zoning ordinance and the master plan that this is an appropriate use. So it's certainly in keeping with the established plan use goals set forth by the municipality. I certainly think that this is a use that contributes to the fabric of Speedwell Avenue.
And the small-town character?
Yes.
Secondly, the substantial detriment. What is your belief of what substantial detriment to the public good is?
My belief stems from the previous testimony of the professionals related to the parking and loading variances, as well as the rational justifications for the signage variances. I do not think any of them cross the threshold for substantial detriment to the zone plan, zoning ordinance, or the public good.
What about the affected nearby properties and character of the neighborhood?
This is a permitted use.
So having a double-drive-through directly next to a residential neighborhood with just a fence and a couple bushes?
There's, man, there's more than just a couple bushes.
Well, we can jump to that, that was my question number fifteen. But last, I believe it was the last meeting, they said there was usually only a two-year bond on that, so if all the plants die in two years, the neighborhood and the bordering neighbors have nothing else to stand or be, you know, leg to stand for?
Yes, there is being a full oversight for certain periods of time over the landscaping package. However, this applicant will be committed to ensuring that the landscaping on-site survives in any proper manner.
For two years, that's what was testified at the last meeting?
The applicant wants an aesthetically pleasing sight as much as the community does. The landscaping will certainly be maintained.
Well, you should talk to the neighbors.
Respectfully, I met you in the hallway after the first meeting. And I said to you, I said, I am willing to sit down with you because you are the most impacted person in this entire room by far. You are the rear property owner. And I said, we are more than willing to help with the screening and you guys would not meet with me. I just want that on the record. We try. I'm still willing to sit down. If you want to sit down, we're happy to look at ways to...
I'm not going to talk to you about trees and bushes and an extra foot or two of fence.
Okay, because I thought you were talking about... I'm sorry, that's my fault. Yeah, no, for sure. You got the question, man.
Okay. Number three, and Ms. Lahamies, is that how you pronounce it? I'm sorry. Number five, she had, wrote in her letter, the applicant should provide testimony regarding potential impacts given the proposed uses immediate proximity to a single-family residential use on Dayton Road. The applicant should demonstrate that the proposed development can meet the performance standards including smoke, air pollution, orders, noises, and glare. Yes, it was testified for the building and some of the lighting. But, but where is the testimony for the pollution? The emissions, radios, headlights, glare? The noises from not, from your seventy to fifty, seventy to seventy-five percent of your clients, seven hundred to eight hundred cars, which was put on testimony, saying that would be coming through daily? Where is the standards for that that the neighbors, we have to, we have to deal with?
Five minutes, so answer that question. The applicant put forth on record that they will conform to all applicable noise, emissions, and other standards on the site. There was a statement. There was a statement to not affect his...
There was nothing about emissions. Okay, well, I've got many more questions. Cut off, I'll break it up at the end.
Joseph Amorosa, A-M-O-R-O-S-A, twenty Dayton Road.
And you have not contributed to any fund?
I have not contributed to any fund.
Thank you.
You refer to no substantial impairment to public health, safety, and general welfare. Does that apply only to the variances you're applying for or the overall site plan and operation?
That's in relation to the variances being requested by the applicant. This is a permitted use by the zoning.
Thank you.
Nineteen Mirabelle, three Cornine Lane. Mirabelle. Three Cornine Lane.
And you have not contributed any funds opposing this application? Okay.
Several times you've mentioned that the applicant would be willing to work with a planner or somebody who mentioned on the board. Is that a guarantee?
Yes, the applicant has committed to turn the signs off when not in operation. The applicant has agreed to the board's planner's request for additional landscaping in that corner of the site. And the applicant will certainly be willing to work with the board on a facade that is brick dominant, similar to the photograph that we shared with the board.
You don't have to pause it, you can just give your brief explanation so you understand what that means. Typically, the order thing that will need to be changeable with its economy or applicant to be ready to work with the board's planner or landscaping consultant traffic to make, to make final changes that would be acceptable to that individual. So if, I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen. If there was an approval, one of the conditions would be every time they said they would work with a person, that there would be a condition that would say you can't build anything until you work with the, you can get the written report and satisfaction with the planner, landscaping if they could, or something. That's how that gets implemented, so you understand what that means.
Okay, so it is basically a guarantee that they will...
It is a statement that they will satisfy. Because it, to some extent, the board doesn't do the nitty-gritty of what the final thing is going to be, the color of the leaf, whether it's going to be shaped by the triangle, a branchel. But some of those things get delegated to their professionals. That's the type of thing. I'm not saying it's going to fail, I just wanted, so you understand what that means.
Carolyn Bennett, nineteen Dayton. And I have no longer plans and a four-year-old, I don't have money to spare for that. I have a few quick questions. I think this is about the landscaping that we've talked about. It's posted on the screen now.
Okay.
No, I'm asking you, I can't read that.
Oh, yes, that's the landscaping.
Does that include who? Is there somebody already hired to do the landscaping? Or this is just in theory what would be eventually hired to execute on this lot?
No, this is simply the design of applicants, I mean.
Is it a guarantee that all of this will be done once a company is secured to do the landscaping? Or is there room for changes based on whoever's hired?
So the applicant, when installing this landscaping, it's going to get inspected by the municipality's engineer that will verify that it is planned in accordance with the plan.
Okay.
So there is oversight of that.
Okay. And then I think you mentioned the exact frontage on Dayton Road is two hundred and forty-five feet. Can you just clarify where the stop sign is along that frontage? Because currently, there one does not exist, contradictory to what the traffic expert said last meeting. I walk that street every day, so can you just clarify where that stop sign is going to be?
It's not really a planning-relevant question, but we can get you...
I'm speaking for the two hundred and forty-five feet that you testified about, the frontage on Dayton. I want to know, will there be a stop sign in that length of the property?
We could call out backup eyewitness. Craig, Craig, do you want to?
Will this take into my five minutes?
No, I gave a pause.
Okay, thank you.
You want the answer though, right?
Yeah, no, I do. I think the stop sign is important.
Can you just clarify, what stop sign? Is it at the end of Dayton or is it on the...
The exit onto Dayton.
Or is it on the McDonald's property? The stop signs to go onto Dayton?
Yeah, right now, there's no stop sign on the Friendly's lot facing Dayton. So I want to know, because he told me there's going to be a stop sign there. I just want to know where throughout that two hundred and forty-five feet.
It'll be at the exit driveway onto Dayton.
And is there room for that not to happen based on wherever this application progress? Like, or is that a definite going to happen? There will be a stop sign before this law is acted?
There will be a stop sign if that application...
Okay. When you talk about...
I'm just sorry, I thought you were referring to an altering application.
No, I'm specifically referring to the stop sign that's going to save a semi-truck from running over anybody walking up and down the sidewalk.
That will stop signs.
Okay, because there is not one there. And it was said last meeting that there is one, so I just want to make that super clear. One needs to get installed, no matter what happens with this law. When you talk about the public good, I don't know exactly what you quoted. I think you said it outweighs the detriment. Can you just define what does public good mean and who that, who is the public?
Public, yeah, that terminology comes from the Massacre and Use Law. You know, public good refers to your overall community.
Including citizens on that street?
Yes.
Does it include people working in McDonald's, not in the town?
Includes everybody.
So how does one draw the line between what public, what public that's good for?
I think you're digging a little bit deeper in this than you need to be. This applicant has set forth planning justifications such as the elimination of a vacant and underutilized building, to providing additional landscaping, to providing pedestrian walkway improvements. Those are all activities that go towards, you know, the public good.
Okay, no, I think, so I'm digging into it because it's really close to home. You don't live three houses down from this lot. And it's important to me to understand what public good means, if that's what we're basing this whole application on, that the public good outweighs the detriment that's going to be caused. So I don't think I'm digging too far into it. I think it's appropriate for everyone to know that. The variance for the parking lot that you guys are asking for, I believe you were calling it a waiver. I think in the engineer's first testimony, he mentioned that because your setback is so far back, you have room for overhang on each of the parking spots. Is that true? Am I verbalizing this correctly?
Which variance you're referring to?
Specifically, the one about the size of the parking spot. The testimony from the first meeting, I believe, said that there is enough room that larger cars can overhang into the grass if they don't fit in the parking spot. I want to make sure I'm understanding that.
I don't recall that specific testimony, but yes, there is, could be overhang, yes.
Okay, I guess, is there a way that the applicant can prevent that overhang from happening on the parking spots that are adjacent to, sorry? You won't be able to hear me if you're speaking.
I'm sorry, I'm trying.
Can this be paused too, then?
We're just trying to get the answers.
I know, I feel, this mind of it is making me so nervous.
Man, there's wheel stops.
Pardon?
There's wheel stops.
Okay.
We'll be about thirty seconds.
I wanted, my question would be, would we triple-make sure that there's not going to be overhang on the grass that then leads to a sidewalk on Dayton? If big pickup trucks need to park and have overhang, I'd rather that happen on this side of the lot where there isn't a sidewalk directly next to the parking spot. So I've seen if that's something that...
There's no impact from the parking onto the sidewalk. There wouldn't be overhang that much.
Okay.
We're five minutes. Like, just for the public, the planning boards and boards of adjustment are given power by the state of New Jersey to bend the rules, give variances. And they say that the, they give you a magic formula that you have to find. One of the things is benefit to the public good, no detriment to the public good, those things. They don't define it. So that's, that is why the people that can testify to that generally, if they're facts, what's going to happen? People express their opinions. But the, the experts have training with David Donald School, they've got a degree in planning. And that's, that's what the standard, they're stuck with it. The New Jersey legislature said you have to find something that has to do with the public good, the benefit, and the legislature didn't define it. So it is based on the training. That's, 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 I give you, everybody's stuck with that language. That's the only way this board could ever exercise granting a variance is applying that language. I didn't mean to cut you off, but I want to explain why that phrase is...
No, that's helpful. Is that same governing body, why would you be limited of time on the mic here?
Excuse me?
Is that same governing body that gives that explanation, the same one that limits the time at the mic?
Yep, they said reasonable limitations and things could be cut off for repetitive or relevant or anything else. So it's just trying to let everybody get in. Yes, the same legislature wrote that provision, then said that the presiding officer, the chair, can impose reasonable limitations. They didn't define reason. The court cases did, which is why I gave the examples of three, five, ten, probably every, every amount of minutes. Other than that, at some point in time, had been a limitation done reasonably. So it's balancing, the applicant has the right to move forward. The board has a time limit, the public wants to get its things in, so there's a reason. That's, that's, that's my opinion.
No, that's helpful. I didn't get my law degree, so the context is helpful.
I'm trying.
Thanks.
Erin Williams, three Juniper Road.
Juniper? J-U-N-I-P-E-R. And no, I did not donate to the...
So you testified that the lighters needs to be internally lit for identification purposes for driver safety, correct?
I'm saying that assists identification.
Then it what?
It provides better identification for motorists and pedestrians, yes.
Well, the traffic expert two meetings ago testified that they expect that the vast majority of the traffic is going to be local traffic. So do we really need to have internally lit signs when it's going to be apparently all of us who are using that? Does it need to be that, or can we actually consider using the doosneck lighting? Or something that's a little bit more in keeping with the sign, with the design of the downtown as we've seen it at GPS Plumbing and things like that?
I provided examples of the Chase and Citizens Bank, but I would also like to note that Kiore, Delicious, Morris Wine and Liquor, Morris Plains Pharmacy, Collins Pub, Scoop Station, Time for a Bagel, Carmel Hypha, Chase and Citizens, they all have internally illuminated signs. And I'm starting to think it hasn't been a detriment to the community or the downtown nature of Speedwell Avenue.
Well, I think that's something that we have tried, the town has been trying to address though with business owners as they have been renovating as well, to try to change the look of some of the buildings. That's come up previously. So we're just asking if it's possible that you consider some different design ideas. So this way, it's something we can, if we're going to be looking at it, to look at it and say, if nice, it blends in.
The applicant has drastically reduced the amount of signage on the building for the modest amount of signage that has left. The applicant is requesting variance for the lighting.
We're going to look, we're going to look at the... We're going to look, we're going to look at the doosnacks for you, and if it's, if it's feasible, we can probably work those in.
Okay. Sidney DeMezzo, 123 Mountain Way. I'm not that it's anybody's business, but no, I didn't donate to the fund. I will do so later. D E M E Z Z O. And if there is a rule about that on some regulation in the state, I'd like to know what it is.
A pause. Courts have said that. Essentially, as part of that interpreting that reasonable word, they have, courts have said that if you were represented by counsel, then you don't also get a chance to watch. So what does that mean? That's the interpretation. It's not something to be up here. It's to bring the board.
Okay. We've talked about public good, which is nice. Do you run, sir? Do you run outside? Do you walk outside? Do you use sidewalks in your own town?
I don't understand how it's relevant.
I'll tell you how it's relevant. Do you know how many pedestrians are hit by cars driving into and out of drive-throughs?
No, I don't have that.
That's okay. I do. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, 20% of pedestrian accidents occur in non-roadway locations, which include drive-throughs. So if we're going to talk about public good, and as somebody who does run and walk outside and is aware of the drive-through locations, because people do in fact speed in and out, and most of the locations along Speedway are more, are used more by residents in this town than I've heard argued that the McDonald's will be used for. People are generally aware that people are walking on the sidewalks. If I have somebody, if somebody's coming into town strictly for McDonald's, which we imagine that they will, right? They might not know that this is really a walking town and that kids, people with their dogs, people with strollers are walking around, and they may not pay attention. So, in the drive-through lane, will there be signs to look for pedestrians, to look both ways? Will there be mirrors? Are there blind spots?
Testimony on the function of the drive-through lanes is done in the mirrors.
So that's a no?
No, I'm telling you that testimony on the functionality of the drive-through lanes and conflicts, or non-conflicts with pedestrians is done by the traffic engineer, and the engineer wasn't part of my testimony.
Okay, that's fine. I'll take it as a no. I appreciate your time.
Joe Belova, 121, Mountain Way. He's a boy, E L L O M U.
Mr. Paloma, you were identified as one of the five people who retained Ms. Cool. Oh, it's the dad. It's the dad. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Good, you got me. Italians always get it. I know.
Not that it's any of your business whether I do it or not, but they're on speaker.
Well, it is actually.
My question is this, it's about the genesis of this whole, this whole thing. There was a decision made that changed the zoning ordinance for this particular area of Speedway Avenue. Am I right on that? So that it enabled the drive-throughs?
Yes.
Okay. When was that, when was that passed? Was it passed when there was just two separate lots there? The Friendly's lot and then the next lot? If they were separate lots, my question is, how all of a sudden do these two lots come together? And then the planning board can, now that, now that the McDonald's can fit in there? Before, it couldn't fit with the, with the, just the Friendly's lot. You need that extra lot in order to get the drive-through. So my question is, when did it occur? And if it occurred before the two lots were merged, then really, you guys shouldn't be applying for this application.
If this is a question, this is a conspiracy theory that's been going around town that I've heard of. And if you would like to bring up the circumstances of how that, how that amendment took place, you should take it up with the town council. Where's the planning board?
My question is this, I'm going to write back to what Ron had said earlier. If it was just the Friendly's lot, which everybody thought would be a great thing. All right, we've got Friendly's in there, Friendly's digging up, it's a mess, we've got to get something geared up. We've got to put a little restaurant in there, maybe hamburgers, whatever, that would be great. And then the traffic wouldn't be so bad, we wouldn't need a drive-through. We could have Friendly's like we did before, but that didn't happen. What we did was we expanded the lots. So my question is, my question is, was this particular ordinance for that one lot? Or was it for both lots?
No, this particular ordinance was for, for the parcels running Speedway Avenue from Dayton all the way to Hanover Avenue.
Yes, it did for all of them, but as single lots. Am I mistaken there? If I'm mistaken, that's fine.
It's zoning for the entire area.
Right. But the zoning applies to the single lot, not, not, unless the lots are then combined. That's the only way that this thing works.
People using multiple lots for development applications is common these days throughout the state.
Right, but when, when the ordinance was passed, it was passed with the knowledge that we've got Friendly's, that we've got the lot next door, that we've got Dunkin' Donuts. So the people that were making that decision, they were making that decision based on what they knew at the time. So that that ordinance, okay, applied to the Friendly's lot. And it said, okay, you can put whatever you want in there, that makes sense, but you can't do it too.
I respectfully disagree with you.
Well, we're bugs too, and you know, I could be wrong. But I think that was something to be repented in what you consider. Thank you.
Rob McCullough, Maple Ave. I have not contributed to anything. I would like to register for the record that I think there's a difference between contributing to something and being represented by an attorney. And I think that it's incumbent on the board to make that distinction to all the residents so they know that they can speak. If you're not represented by an attorney, maybe you should be able to. Most of my question actually was what Mr. Paloma said, so I really appreciate that, just to extend on that. You keep saying that this is an approved use, so it's an approved use for one lot. Would a double drive-through fit on the single Friendly's lot alone? Would that be something that'd be viable on that lot?
That's not the applicant's application. The applicant's application is...
No, please let him answer.
The applicant's application is for two lots. I'm not going to comment on a hypothetical development scenario that doesn't exist.
I understand that as a no. So would this, would a 10-drive-through be an acceptable use on this application? Could, if you could put 10-drive-through lanes, would that be an acceptable use?
My testimony relates to the two drive-through lanes being proposed by the applicant. Nothing more, nothing less.
You came in front of the board and you said that you have certain credentials. I'm asking you, would that be an acceptable use? You say this is an acceptable use. I'm asking you, what is the limit? 1, 2, 3, 10, 100? What are the drive-through lanes in this application?
My role is to provide testimony for the planning for the board, which I've done. I'm using my credentials to answer your questions.
It doesn't seem to me like you're answering my question, because you're just keep repeating the same thing. For the record, what I'm trying to ask is, you're turning to two lots, as Mr. Paloma said, correct? Are these, are these lots joined right now, or are they still separated in terms of their parcel?
This application includes a request to merge the parcels.
Is there variance required for that, or is there any other, anything? I know in residential lots, oftentimes these are merged, sort of if the lots are rigorously shaped. In, in business lots, is there, what is the process? Could you describe the process for that?
There's no variances required for merging these lots.
Is there a process that that needs to undergo after this board in order to merge those lots?
Yes.
Could you describe what that process is for us?
Yes, the revised lot needs to be filed with the county.
Okay, so in order for this application to be successful, that would need to be approved by the county or by the, by the borough? Was there any, was there any mechanism in the borough to approve that, or it's only on the county?
The borough approves it, then it gets filed with the county.
And what governing body is it on the borough level that approves that?
This board.
And is that part of this application, or it's a separate application?
It's part of this application.
Okay, so it's fair to say that if that is not approved by this board, then the current lot configuration would not be feasible, because there have to be setbacks between whatever the buildings were, there have to be two buildings or something like this. Is that fair to say?
I see no rational reason why that shouldn't be approved by the state.
That's not what I asked. What I asked, is it true that if you're, if, if this, if a merger did not happen, that the current configuration would not be viable?
Sorry, I gave you an answer. If you want to make a statement, you can do that.
You said you had to see your reason for it to happen. And I asked, if that merger were not approved, would the current configuration be viable? That's what I asked.
I answered your question.
I don't believe you could. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take this. Michelle, we're going to take this one more.
You can take a break now, because I got to go too. I don't want to be the last guy on the chat. Thank you, Samir. I'll hold it in the meantime. Robert Bianchi, B I A N C H I, 11-layer drive. I don't believe it's necessary, a retainer agreement needs to be signed in order to be represented by an attorney. I've signed no agreement, and sorry for my crew over here, I also did not contribute anyway, so it doesn't make a difference. I just think that if there are people here that want to put something on the record, and they've been denied that because they've contributed, they should at least state that so at least it's clear for the record. Mr. Robiano, thank you very much. Appreciate your, your being here. I'm just curious, if there, if there's no loading zone, and some people suggest that this parking lot is going to be very tight. If I understand from a traffic engineer, there's not going to be any idling of trucks that are going to be at this facility when they're loading and unloading things. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And you're a planner, so you've done this lot for McDonald's, I assume?
I've represented McDonald's in the past.
About how many times?
One off the top of my head.
Okay, so you would agree, when we're talking about whether or not something is detrimental to the public well-being and the public welfare, that having trucks at a tight site need to be able to move without any safety concerns? Would that be fair to say?
No.
It wouldn't be?
I do not characterize this as a tight site.
Okay, would you agree with me that the trucks need to be able to move in a way that's safe for pedestrians and cars, regardless of whether it's tight or not?
Yes.
What is the enforcement mechanism? For example, if a truck is loading or unloading in an unauthorized spot? In other words, blocking parking spots, or let's say they go in and they're idling. Would that be a hazard to the community?
Well, the store manager, as stated in previous testimony, will be guiding the truck deliveries on-site, very modest two deliveries in 45 minutes a week.
Right, so you do recognize, and I think you're looking over towards the, somebody over there, that it is important that these rules are enforced, because if they're not enforced, it represents a detriment to the community. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to rely upon the store management to enforce the rules in order for this community not to be affected by this facility. Is that fair to say?
No.
Okay, what happens if the store?
Let him answer.
I thought you said no.
No, he was speaking.
Okay.
So let him finish.
Of course.
Good.
Finish.
The residents also have the ability to call any applicable code enforcement officers, the police. It's not solely...
Let him finish.
I thought he was done. Go ahead.
He wasn't.
It's not solely the responsibility of the applicant. There is police power within the municipality to regulate these activities.
Okay, what ordinance allows a public police department to come? Say for example, if a truck is idling and enforced, what regulations specifically would they be violating? The truck, if it was idling?
There's state regulations.
Which regulation? There is no regulation?
Yes, yes, there are.
Can you cite it?
I can't cite it off the top of my head, but there are regulations pertaining to that activity.
Okay, so now would then be the responsibility of the Morris Plains Police Department, which got enough to do, to go and have some sort of code enforcement, assuming that there isn't a forcible code provision. Is that right?
Sorry, this is a regular activity in 13,000 McDonald's nationwide, as well as Wendy's, Burger King, every McDonald's, Wendy's and Burger King in Morris County loads in the parking lot in this manner.
Is it just, you keep saying Morris County. In other counties, do they have loading areas on other McDonald's in other counties? In Hudson County, say?
No, this community seems to like local comparisons, so that's why I looked at Morris County.
Is that also applicable to the other, say for example, if the traffic engineer had referred to Bayonne, the Bayonne facility being very much like this configuration where we're at in Morris Plains? Does the non-loading zone thing also occur in Hudson County as well as Morris County?
All over the state.
Okay, so it's a statewide thing? It's how McDonald's operates?
It's how McDonald's operates, it's how Wendy's operates, it's how Chick-fil-A operates. Loading within the parking lot is the industry norm.
Okay, so would you agree or not, based on the testimony, either by your first-hand knowledge or testimony you listened to, that the Bayonne facility is going to be very much like the Morris Plains facility?
Sorry, we don't need to go down this route.
Yes, we do.
No, we don't.
Yeah, because you're, because you were an expert testified to.
Stop berating the witness.
I'm stating...
You're an expert testified to.
I'm stating that it's the industry norm to load in the parking lot.
Okay, so, so you would agree with me, would you not, that what is going on in Bayonne would be very similar to what would be going on in Morris Plains? That's what the expert testified for McDonald's. You agree with that, or don't you?
In terms of loading, yes.
Thank you. I love it.
So we're going to take a... We're done, yes, yes. So we're going to take a 15-minute break. And we'll be back at about 2:00 AM.
...
If I may just speak to the public real quick, everybody appreciates all of the involvement and everything else. I have to add once or twice, if it makes it difficult for other members of the public who are listening, if there are any comments across talking when the witness is going back to work. I know you have a lot of motion and there's a lot of opinion on this, but it makes it easier for everybody else if you don't talk when the witness has a big question and answer. Appreciate it. And we thought it was the end, but there's a few more people with questions, so there's going to be some more questions.
Okay, go ahead.
I have one. Hi, Dan Goybneche, G-O-Y-B-N-E-C-H-E, at Six Diana Road.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Six Diana, oh, thank you. Just a question, I didn't see the signage earlier, so I'm sorry if I was there. Anything in there specifically to discourage loitering from customers, especially like after the 9:00 PM hour?
You're asking for a no-loitering sign? Is that what you-
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Because we could put up a no-loitering-
Well, no, we were talking about certain enforcement and public good, and providing police for code enforcement, so if there are people hanging out there ready to get disturbed next to a residence after 9:00 o'clock, there are times when they don't want to be forced to present that. Call the police, require store manager to- Okay, thank you.
Hi, Tom Adelise, B-A-T-T-A-G-L-I-E-S-E, Tucalla Road. Why did your testimony not consider any environmental aspects related to the restaurant and drive-through as required by the zoning ordinance performance standards to provide evidence of compliance, including for standards for odors, noise, and air pollution?
Because as you heard in previous meetings, the applicant committed to meeting all applicable regulations.
Does the ordinance not state that it's required that you show evidence prior to the approval of the application?
The applicant put four tests on it, all applicable regulations will be met.
Okay, I advise you to check the ordinance. Have you ever seen a study on drive-through air emissions exposure values and associated effects from McDonald's?
No, I have not.
Who is qualified, from your perspective, to provide evidence on those performance standards?
The applicant has committed to meeting all applicable performance standards.
Okay. With your training as a planner and in the spirit of holding the AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners Code of Ethics and Professional Conduct that you said you were part of with that membership, how do you truthfully explain that this McDonald's with a double lane drive-through will contribute to the vision that was already outlined by Mrs. Seer of Morris Plains?
This McDonald's contributes to the vision of the master plan and the zoning ordinance adopting this specific use.
And the master plan itself, how do you truthfully show that it contributes to that? The master plan, the community vision?
Sir, this witness is under oath, so he's taken an oath to tell the truth.
I was looking for maybe an elaboration, if that's possible, beyond that this is an approved zoning objection, which actually is a misleading idea, there's more to it than just that fact.
I don't think there's anything misleading here. I think you're trying to make it misleading, but I think the zoning ordinance and master plan are pretty clear. This is a permitted use which advances the goals and objectives of the master plan to promote a resilient economy based on uses that are not attainable on the internet. And that's what you have before you this evening.
Okay, why does your view that this is such a positive development for Morris Plains and supports our master plan conflict so strongly with research and renowned experts such as David Dixon, Vice President and Planning Fellow from global firm Stantec, who has said that drive-throughs don't, quote, "support any of the life invitality and amenities that suggest people might want to come live, work, or play in a neighborhood." Drive-throughs will move to a much more auto-centric world. So how is this, how is your explanation really aligning with views such as that that seem to corroborate or are aligned with our master plan?
Sir, as I stated previously, this isn't the zoning ordinance, we're not justifying the particular suitability of this use. This is a permitted use by the zoning ordinance of the borough of Morris Plains.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the public that you want to, as I was just saying, ask?
Justice Seer, 11-Dan Road, thank you for letting me continue.
Absolutely.
One second. Again, pertaining to Ms. Lahane's report number nine, it said the applicant should provide testimony regarding the proposed location of the trash enclosure and the feasibility of relocating the proposed trash enclosure further away from the eastern property line. In, I believe it was the engineer's report, there was some line that just said it was given in testimony, but there was never any discussion of having it relocated anywhere else.
The applicant made the trash enclosure area smaller and provided additional landscaping in that area. in that area.
Right, but Ms. Lahane wrote the feasibility of relocating the proposed trash enclosure.
There's no feasible location to relocate the trash enclosure.
Based off of the design of the optimal McDonald's drive-through.
No, based on the fact that the site has two front yards, you don't put trash enclosures in front yards. It's typical that...
Well, the existing Friendly's building never had the trash enclosure in the back. It was towards the building.
It's customary for trash enclosures to be in the corner of the lot.
Not that lot. I've lived there 32 years, and Friendly's has been there a lot longer than that, and the trash enclosure is always away from the property.
Still have any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, back to substantial detriment of the public good. Is it not, does it not mean that when evaluating for a variance, you would need to cause... I'm sorry, excuse me. When evaluating if a variance would cause substantial detriment, decision-making primarily needs to be considered on how it would affect nearby properties and the character of the neighborhood?
Yes.
And how it would negatively impact or not impact bordering neighborhoods and communities?
Yes.
And you don't believe that this would negatively impact the bordering community?
No, not at all. I think the applicant through the engineering testimony has demonstrated adequate off-street parking to meet the needs of the proposed restaurant. We've gone through countless times discussing that the loading within the drive-ais of the parking lot is the industry norm. Every freestanding fast-food burger restaurant in the county does not have a loading lane. They all load through the drive-ais. Additionally, with relation to the signage, during break, the applicant has committed to provide goose-neck lighting on all of the signage. They will not be internally illuminated, so that's another variance that we're eliminating with this application. So I think when you look at the variance relief being requested by the applicant, there's certainly no substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance or the master plan with the granting of those variances.
Well, it's not the, I'm not asking about substantial impact to the zoning ordinance, on a substantial detriment to the public good is what I'm asking.
There's no substantial detriment to the public good with the granting of any of those variances.
Okay. Do you realize that under the C variance standards, a variance is permitted when one of the purposes of the MLUL would be advanced from the deviation for the bulk variance requirements? And they benefit from the variance, the benefits from the variance will outweigh any detriment to the public good. Importantly, the benefit from the grant of the C2 variance cannot benefit the property owner only. Instead, it must actually benefit the community and serve as a better zoning alternative for that property?
Yes, I provided that breakdown in my testimony.
Okay. Quick, stop the clock for a second. I've got so many. The bollards signs, how many are there and where are they located?
There's two of them in the bollards that separate the drive-through lanes on the south side of the property. They're two square feet apiece.
So they just separate the two lanes?
They're in the drive-through lanes. They serve as directional signs to let the motorists know that there's two drive-through lanes to be utilized.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Chlorinda Landy, 94 Littleton Road, welcome.
You haven't contributed to...
I just have a quick question. Has the applicant considered revising their application to eliminate the drive-through and maybe just put up McDonald's Restaurant?
No.
Are there any other questions from the public?
Madam Chairman, this concludes our case in chief, and we do reserve the right to call witnesses in rebuttal following the presentation of the objector's case. And we thank the board for their time and patience and the public for all your input. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to first, I would like to introduce Peter Steck to be able to... I'd like to introduce Peter Steck right now regarding, he's representing my client's interests. He's our planning expert here, and could you wind up giving your credentials, state that he admitted as witness?
I swear, raise your right hand, stand your hands, tell your last name.
Peter G. Steck, S-T-E-C-K.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony before this board, to be the proof of the hold of the gentleman who is walking out?
I do. I have a handout that I will eventually refer to. I ordered a copy to, and...
Sure, I have two markups and an evidence, and also I do have a USB cord with my key if we can put it up on the screen as well.
Can we have your credentials?
Yeah, I'm going to do that next. Thank you for inviting me. By way of education, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Marquette University and a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers. In terms of work experience, I served as an associate planner with two consulting firms, Alvin Agershen Associates in Trenton and Malcolm Kessler Associates that was in Hackensack. I was the planning director for the township of Montclair for about nine and a half years. For the past 20-some-odd years, I practiced as a planning consultant. I've appeared in approximately 230 municipalities and in Superior Court and in tax court and been accepted as an expert planner in those jurisdictions. I was licensed in 1976 with license number 1776, and it still in effect this evening.
Everyone agree to accept that I'm an expert? Okay.
More testimony?
Sorry.
Are you going to testify more? Can you give your one first line?
Sure. We're going to show the exhibits, but I want to ensure that they are marked.
The copy's got to be given, to mark with, sorry, sorry, with secretary Karen, Mark Co., one, about to be addressed today, and then the copy's to the board. And by talking about anything, can I just explain what it is?
Did we put a marking on it yet?
O1.
O1.
Karen, something you missed.
I'll refer to it in my testimony, but this O1 is a four-page document. It was prepared by me today. The first page shows a 2020 satellite photograph where I superimposed the zone lines, and I also reproduced a portion of the 2000 master plan. Next page are four photographs that were taken by me on December 5th of this year, and I believe they accurately depict existing conditions. The last two pages have excerpts, upper right-hand corner, P3, an excerpt from the site plan review standards, and the last page is an excerpt from the zoning standards that have to do with the location of parking. So I'll get to that in a minute. This property is, and I'm going to say some obvious things to lay a foundation. This property consists of two lots that are already developed. Mixed-use office on one side, and the corner lot is the vacant Friendly's. The proposal is to demolish all of the improvements on the property, but save three trees. The reason I'm referencing that is that because everything is being demolished, including the sidewalk and the curving on Speedwell, the applicant is essentially starting from scratch, so the driveways are flexible. Although the applicant says, oh, we're going to keep the same location of one of the driveways, the answer is that's being demolished. So there's no freezing of existing conditions here. That driveway location, in my opinion, is movable because the applicant is demolishing the curving, the curb cuts, and the sidewalk in the right of way. Although the Friendly's site is vacant, there's no evidence that it adversely affects surrounding properties. The other surrounding properties seem to be reasonably well-maintained. People don't like a lot of vacant buildings, but the answer is I do not observe any detriment from the current conditions of the property. The proposal is to construct a new fast-food restaurant that happens to be McDonald's with somewhat an extraordinary amount of car loading locations for the drive-through. Most McDonald's, you don't only see, you know, two corridors that feed in, so this is obviously a business plan that's intended, at least by the applicant, to accommodate a lot of the drive-through traffic. Part of my analysis was to look at the surrounding area, and I'll refer to the first page of O1, which again is a 2020 aerial photographs. And what is significant is that this property abuts a residential zone essentially to the east, and as you know, that house is quite close to the rear property line. And for about even 40% of the property, it abuts a residential zone across Dayton Road. So there is a lot of exposure here to residential uses. If you look on the right-hand side of the first page, and I'll talk about this more in a minute, but the applicant keeps on saying, the applicant's planner keeps on saying, I reviewed the 2018 master plan. That's not the master plan. That's the reexamination report. That's a different section of the municipal land use law. The master plan that you have is dated 2000, and it's a summary of the 1975 document. So the applicant's planner has been looking at the wrong document. When you want to justify the negative criteria, and you want to say it doesn't substantially impair the zone plan, that's the 2000 summary master plan. That's not the reexamination report. The reexamination report doesn't even require a public hearing. So the applicant's planner looked at the wrong document. Now, I did look at the master plan, and that's on the right-hand side of the property. The master plan did not have a distinction between the R2 or the R3, excuse me, V2 or the V4 zones, all had a general commercial zone. But what was apparent to me is that this section of the Speedwell corridor has a higher concentration of non-residential uses, excuse me, non-commercial uses. There are houses that, a house abuts this property, it is across, there's a house across the street, and on both sides, there are institutional uses, again, that don't make this a dense commercial corridor. And that suggests to me that there is an additional sensitivity that's needed because of the proximity of the residential buildings. On the second page of the, of O1, you'll see on the upper side, I have the two locations of Lot 5 on the left-hand upper left, and Lot 4 on the upper right. On the bottom, I have Dayton Road looking east, no parking on one side. It is a purely residential street, and very significant is on Lot 6 at 11 Dayton, there's a house that's maybe less than 10 feet from that rear property line. And that's an important feature because of land use impacts such as noise, odors, and the like. So this is, while it is in the V2 district, it is peculiar in that there are non-commercial uses in the area, particularly single-family homes. I note that you have a traffic ordinance that says that Dayton, for its entire length, should not have trucks. Now, you know that you can get to a property if you're delivering a truck, but to that specific property, but your public policy is that Dayton should not have trucks. Now, the applicant is obviously using Dayton both for exit of a trash truck and for a tractor-trailer, which is the loading and unloading function. And there are instances, there's a McDonald's in Fairlawn on Broadway where the property is a corner lot, there's a McDonald's there, the side street happens to be a residential street, and they don't have an access to the side street. They're protecting that residential street. Here, the applicant is, even though it's an angled driveway, the applicant wants to have a driveway there that will accommodate truck exiting. The master plan wanted to be consistent with the existing character of the community. That was the goal that has persisted for a long time. And again, I'm referring to the 2000 master plan, I believe it's August of 2000 that the planning board adopted. That's a different document than the reexamination report. So when you want to test the negative criteria, you'll look at the 2000 master plan, it's a summary of the 1975 master plan. Did not make a distinction between the different commercial zones. The applicant, apparently, applicant's planner, apparently never even looked at that document. The only thing he looked at was the reexamination report. You changed your, you, Morris Plains changed its ordinance in 2023, ordinance 14-2023. It's important that that is a recent change because one would easily surmise that the governing body knew what a McDonald's and a fast-food restaurant was. It knew what a loading space was. It knew that some parking spaces are 10 by 20 rather than 9 by 18. In fact, most of you this evening parked in 10 by 20-foot parking spaces of the parking lot. It's easy to get in and out of, right? Now, I know that there are a lot of kids here with child carriers coming out, but this municipality knew what a 10 by 20-foot space was. And I'm saying that because it's a recent ordinance, and it's not like this is an old ordinance that's been around for 30 years, and times have changed. When the governing body adopted this ordinance, that's my job. When the governing body adopted this ordinance, they knew what a McDonald's was, they knew what a loading spot was, they knew what 10 by 20 parking spaces were. And now the applicant is saying, but look at all these other uses in the area, these other McDonald's. Well, the answer is you get to have your own definitions, and the governing body didn't say, oh, we're going to adopt the McDonald's industry standard for our fast-food regulations. You're entitled to have your own standards to meet the needs of your community. And the peculiarities of this V2... and the peculiarities of this V2 zone that abuts residential uses. It's a permitted use, but that's not the end of the story. You have performance standards. So you're gonna have a McDonald's, and the applicant doesn't want to tell you where they're gonna load. Somewhere in the aisles, they can't do it in the front yard, they're gonna probably do it in the rear yard because that's the back of the building. That loading location for a tractor-trailer is close to the nearest residential use. And one of your performance standards is that you meet the state noise code, which changes based on times of the day. They went over it, whatever, it was seven in the morning, but the noise code changes, I think it, there's a harsher standard or lighter standard at night. When you have a tractor-trailer parking by a residential property line, and this is not only a residential property line, it's a house maybe ten feet away, that clearly suggests that there's a noise issue. And the applicant says, "Don't worry about it, I'm not gonna meet the noise." Well, if it turns out that the applicant can't meet the state standard, what are they gonna do? They're gonna come back and maybe put a highway twenty-foot-tall concrete wall to block the noise. I'll tell you that landscaping and an eight-foot fence doesn't stop the noise. So it is a legitimate concern, and it's not enough to say, "It's a permitted use, don't bother me." You have standards of odor, so has the applicant talked to you about the filtering system? Has the applicant talked about the noise, not of the speaker, of the tractor-trailer that's gonna be parked there? That is a noise generator. It's gonna be heard at the top of the exhaust pipe and from the engine. And I would suggest to you, that is a real legitimate concern, and I would suggest to you that doing your job is not just listening to the applicant who says, "Don't worry about it, I'll meet this code." The applicant has the burden of proof. You have no proof that they can meet that, and it clearly is a troublesome situation. Your code says that you need a designated loading spot. You get to make that choice. The industry standard of McDonald's is not the code. And the applicant has to show, the applicant says there's no hardship here, so the applicant shows that the benefits of not having a loading space substantially outweigh the detriments. Well, I think in order for you to know the noise, you gotta know where that truck is gonna be posted. You have a standard of ten-foot-by-twenty-foot parking spaces. And McDonald's is telling you, "Don't worry, none of the eighteen is fine." Well, nine-by-eighteen is fine for residential uses in the state of New Jersey, but you get to call the shots. And the governing body already called the shots. It said ten-by-twenty-foot spaces. And ten-foot-wide spaces are great if you have a child-oriented use, where you open the door, you bring out the cart, the kid, your child carrier with your other two kids, and you walk in. You have a carrier, a stroller that you set up. That's why ten-foot-wide spaces make sense. The applicant is only doing eighteen-foot-deep spaces, which means there's gonna be an overhang. And that overhang is gonna impinge upon the area that's supposed to be landscaping. Since this is a blank slate, the applicant is demolishing all of the paving, all of the sidewalks, all the curving, all the curb cuts on Speedwell. I would think a traffic expert would say, "Shouldn't you align your driveway with Hillview on the other side?" Your ordinance has a standard for roads. It says you either align it across an intersection or you're a hundred-and-twenty-five feet at least away, so a car exiting can straighten out and then make a formal left turn, let's say, at Hillview. The applicant is saying, "No, I'm keeping the existing curb cut." They're not, they're demolishing everything. So from a pure traffic point of view, shouldn't that driveway, and maybe an entrance and exit, so you don't mess up the side street, shouldn't that driveway align across the street? The applicant says, "I'm gonna make a lot of concessions, I'm now gonna do goose at the last minute." We have goose neck lighting here. What about the size of the letter height? Don't worry, you know, we need this. Well, your code says two-foot-tall letters. And the applicant says, "Look, well, they have more than two feet." That's not the issue. If you were drafting an ordinance, then I think you would take all the data that the applicant's planner said, and maybe you want to change ordinance, but the answer is, it isn't changed. When the master plan wants to preserve the character of the community, it made the choice of what kind of size, what kind of signs, and what size signs and what types of letters are needed. It, that's, that's the type of community aesthetic that has been implemented. The applicant refers to, I guess, McDonald's on Route 10. That has, in my opinion, a different character than this property does because of its proximity to residential uses. So this, in my opinion, is a tight site. And I think there are variances that appear that are not recognized. If you look at the last two pages of my report, O1, my handout, I show the design standards. So keep in mind that when you have a standard that's in your site plan ordinance, relief is called an exception in the municipal land use law or a waiver. And you have to show that this is a practical difficulties. There's not a benefits-outweigh-the-detriment rationale in the municipal land use law for an exception. That applies to variances. A variance is a provision in your zoning ordinance. It's harder to get variances, and they, they trump the standards in your zoning chapter, trump the standards in your site plan ordinance, in my opinion. So on P3, the third page of O1, I quote from the site plan ordinance, it says, "Twenty-by-ten spaces are required and do not interfere with the sidewalk or landscape." If the applicant were having an eighteen-foot-deep space, and that abutted an extra-wide sidewalk of, let's say, sixteen feet, oh, that makes sense. You can allow an overhang. I don't see any, the applicant at last minute says, "Oh, we're gonna put in curb stops." I don't see them on the plan, maybe they're there, but I just don't see them. Maybe that's a last-minute, kind of a hail mary exchange to the plan. But cars here will overhang and intrude into the landscape area. And in my opinion, that should not be allowed. The only reason you would grant an eighteen-foot-deep space is that the overhang really didn't bother anything, didn't intrude on any landscaping area. I think it does here, and that's on both sides of the property. The next page is a more important issue. One of the standards in your zoning ordinance, now, now we're talking variances rather than exceptions. Section thirteen-5.7D, general requirements for non-residential off-street parking. One, "No part of any off-street parking area shall extend into any required front yard more than the front yard setback requirement in the zone in which it is situated, unless specifically permitted in the respective zone." On, while it's thirty-three feet on Speedwell, and actually, that probably comes close to one of the parking spaces, I'm gonna go ignore that. But there are all those red dots on Dayton Road, they're in the required front yard setback, and they require variances. In my opinion, because there is a provision in the site plan ordinance, which is not, doesn't have the weight to it of a design standard. The applicant needs variances for all of those parking spaces on Dayton that protrude into the required front yard. Think of how nice the landscaping would be there if you had twenty-five feet of landscaping along there and potentially no driveway. That would offer some decent protection for Dayton Road. Again, according to your ordinances, shouldn't have any truck traffic on it. This is a variance that, in my opinion, is a legitimate variance. It's in your zoning ordinance. While I'll grant you, there is a standard in the design section, that can't undo your zoning standard. So this is a requirement the applicant has not addressed. It's a requirement that meets some testimony or above positive and negative criteria. There's no testimony on the record. And just as you, at the end of the day, yes, restaurants are permitted, provided they don't produce too much noise, too much odor. Stick to noise, provided they don't produce too much noise. The applicant doesn't want to tell you where they're gonna load. I think they're gonna load in the back, and they're gonna block an aisle in the back, and it's gonna be close to that residential use. That is a noise generator that must be addressed to, to test whether this site plan configuration complies with that performance standard. It is a statewide standard, and by the way, you don't get grandfathered in on the state standard. If this is approved and built in a year from now, and a neighbor complains about the noise and it violates the state code, the applicant's gonna come back to you with a sound wall. A concrete highway sound wall, probably. That's gonna change the whole character of this development. So it needs to be addressed now, and it hasn't by the applicant. This site is either too small for all the things that are going on, or the restaurant's too big for it. It's a permitted use, but not at this scale. So based on what I've heard so far, and remember, the applicant has the burden of proof, the applicant has not, in my opinion, provided adequate testimony that would support the relief that's requested. The applicant looked at the wrong planning document, didn't look at the 2000 master plan. And in my opinion, there is insufficient credible evidence for you to approve this application.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Peter. I just want to also make note and just hear your opinion, Janice. Because they keep on alluding to the drive-throughs like Chase Bank and stuff like that, I'm looking at the hours for Chase Bank, and it's nine to five as compared to six to eleven. And something that I forgot, and when we're talking about the signage and we're talking about this front yard setback that's been addressed, you have all these cars with headlights that are going in, right? And you have surrounded by residential property. Do you think that, that's also, one of the purposes for this front yard setback here is to alleviate that, the reason why, in all these sort of situations, is to prevent sort of the lighting, the noise, the glare, the cars that are having the headlights all over the place till eleven o'clock?
That's clearly another factor involved. Now, I'll grant you that with enough fencing, the applicant says, "Oh, put eight-foot fencing in the back." That may, I'm not sure the nature of the fencing. That may block in one direction some of those light fixtures, but this is gonna be an active use. In my experience, an eight-foot fence does not stop noise. Landscaping doesn't, doesn't stop the noise. I've seen studies from the highway administration that need a hundred feet of woods to really have a difference of noise. That is clearly an issue here. The state says you measure it at the residential property line, and the applicant has not addressed that at all. So I would add the fact that more landscaping on the side means better protection for headlights, better, better protection in terms of circulation of the surrounding properties. And again, keep in mind, this part of the Speedwell corridor has, in my opinion, a higher concentration of residential uses and institutional uses.
Also, I just wanted to make note, because they're using, and I love that you've mentioned these industry standards and the differential treatment, the industry standards and the zoning, as well as pointing out that even though the drive-through was now a permitted use there, that they didn't change the requirement for the size of the parking spots as well as the amount of parking that's needed there.
That, you know, that's correct. Again, you, you're entitled to adopt your own standards, which you have. The state took control over residential parking spaces, but you're entitled to have ten-by-twenty-foot parking spaces. There isn't an argument that says the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments for parking, for the dimensions of parking spaces. That's a design standard. And I would say, if you could, two uses that come to mind that you need ten-foot-wide spaces is maybe a food store, we have shopping carts coming in and out. But you also have a kid-oriented use like this is, where you have a lot of action, a lot of loading and unloading from the side of a van, from the side of a passenger car. That's why ten-foot-wide spaces are appropriate here.
What if we're talking about the MOUL and the A and the G portions of it for the intention of that, and we're also looking at the fact that this is across the street from a middle school, and we're dealing with all these sort of issues? How does that come to play, the fact that this is across the street from a middle school?
You know, again, the applicant is saying this encourages the most appropriate use of land. My point is, the lot isn't big enough for this use of this land. There are too many compromises in the site plan to accommodate this scale of a permitted use. In terms of aesthetics, there is no detriment that I see from the current aesthetics of the site. Someone's gonna use that vacant building at some time. But the fact that it is such a high-intensity use, one that is child-oriented and near a school, in my, in my mind, means there's an extra emphasis on pedestrian safety.
So I'm really happy that you included the pictures, and I'm gonna bring them back right now, because one of the arguments for the positive criteria for the benefits of this is that of getting rid of this vacant lot over here, and that is attributing to the visual, to making it attractive visual environment, right? Like you're pointing out here, I mean, it looks like a Friendly's with just no sign, and it looks like the landscaping is pretty well maintained with that. In your opinion, does this meet the criteria of your cases to prove that their, that vacant lot is needed? And by filling it in with a McDonald's, that criteria, the benefit of replacing this so-called vacant, or it's not blighted, I, definitely not, does not need the definition of blighted, meet the criteria underneath, is it's the A or G of the MOUL? Again, with this whole visual environment, because this is what they, what they have to prove, relying on that.
Yeah, purpose G talks about having sufficient space in an appropriate location. This is not sufficient space for this size restaurant, in my opinion. And aesthetics will be changed, but there are many alternatives to aesthetics. The fact that you are changing the front facade to put some brick on it, in my opinion, does not allow you to conclude that this is an improvement in aesthetics, especially when you have so many drive-through lanes. This is gonna be a large parking lot with a lot of cars in it. That's not aesthetic. The applicant is drawing your attention, "Oh, we're gonna do goose neck mining, we're gonna do a little more landscaping here, we'll do an eight-foot fence." That's not gonna hide the fact that you have a pure traffic-oriented use here that's primarily for the drive-through customer.
So again, going back to this whole Chase Bank thing, especially since it's only open till five o'clock, and they're not, you know, when we talk about the and they're not, you know, when we talk about the signs, if you're unhappy that they're going to address that with the gooseneck lighting, but it still doesn't kind of quit to play the headlights with everything that a double drive-through would create there, especially one that's open till eleven o'clock. With that, how does that go into the criteria? Can you even have the general welfare under this?
Well, lighting is clearly a concern and idling cars are clearly a concern and a truck loading and unloading is a concern. It is possibly manageable to have enough fencing to block headlights, but there are, when someone shows you an engineering plan, they show where the illumination is on the ground and they forget the fact that you're in front of six other cars and your lights are bouncing off their windshield and everywhere else. It's not a true picture of what this is gonna look like at night with cars stacked up here.
Yeah, and especially since they, you know, when they say, oh, this is permitted use. And the creation of this permitted use, you know, they might have been referring to a nine-to-five drive-through here.
Well, the answer is, it's a permitted use, but you have to look at the scale. You have to look at its operation and the site plan aspects of this. You can approve the use, but in my opinion, the current site plan is so deficient in warrants denial by this board.
Thank you. And also the fact that this variance, and you heard the testimony when I asked particularly for the planner, are there any variances that are also required here? And then you made note of this variance for thirteen slash five point seven here. What, in your opinion, what sort of testimony that they're going to have to show, since you're saying that this site plan is just, right now, doesn't work?
The answer is, I'm not gonna do the applicant's work.
There you go.
The answer is, the applicant has the burden of proof. They haven't even recognized it as a variance. It's their burden to demonstrate that that's justifiable. And again, think in your mind how much a twenty-five-foot-wide landscape area would modify the adverse impacts of this development, assuming that you had enough room to have loading and all the other stuff.
Yeah, and one of the things, I mean, that we've talked to internally is that, honest with you, they didn't provide a planning report.
Well, that's, the testimony's okay, it's just that he looked at the wrong planning document.
Exactly. So, you know, thankfully, we, you know, my client hired you at the last minute. We're very grateful that we were able to get your time today. But for reexamining what is right now, do you think that would require the municipal plan to kind of reexamine, especially with the testimony today and also with the fact that this variance? Because, you know, they were given all the information.
The applicant had their chance, in my opinion.
Yes. Thank you so much. At this point, I'm actually going to go into show here, because one of the things, I mean, this is funny, hold on a second. Like, when I bring up this video, hold on. So I'm gonna bring up a video and this is just showing how much noise a truck on Bayonne. Okay, so it's in our list. So we are going to, I would like to admit some evidence here showing. Can I, can I?
This is not my evidence.
Not his evidence.
This is evidence I have seen. This is a video of a loading operation at the Bayonne McDonald's, which I saw prior to my testimony. I did not shoot the video.
Not shoot the video? The only reason why I would like to admit this is because they referenced Bayonne as an example here of how the trucks work here, especially in the fact that there's not gonna be this loading zone, which is one of the variances they're asking for. I believe that this is relevant to the case we're making here. Because, again, they used, they opened up the door by repeatedly referencing Bayonne. So at this point, I mean, I would like to introduce a video showing on December 2nd, 11:07 a.m. The Bayonne property and a shot by Jess Williams. But again, I'm relying upon, you know, if it's admissible. I believe that it's admissible and it's definitely relevant here, especially since they referenced it multiple times. And it also shows the standard practice, which they keep on referencing, that repeatedly here. I believe that it's relevant to show a case where this is actually happening.
May I make a record? The Bayonne site was referenced, not in connection with loading noise, had nothing to do with it. This is being shown, I think, just to inflame a crowd. There is no relevance to this loading. I don't know who took the video, I don't know when it was taken. It's not admissible in this case, for sure. I mean, the prejudice far outweighs any probative value that this evidence could possibly have. We've addressed noise, we addressed it during our engineering and our traffic testimony. To put a video up not of our site is highly prejudicial. We use the Bayonne example, if everyone recalls, as an example where there's a McDonald's close to residential neighborhoods. That is the only purpose we referenced it. We did not open the door to videos of trucks loading and unloading.
Okay, we're going to decide. I'd like to hear from the board whether or not we agree with our attorney. Sure, it's a video of a McDonald's in Bayonne on December 2nd, 11:07 a.m. It was shot by Jess Williams, he's over there.
This is a video of what?
This is a video of the site. And it shows the current configuration, the circulation with the loading of one of their trucks going back and forth, which they keep on recalling. Because we didn't have a sound report or anything like that, and they referenced Bayonne multiple times. My clients went to the Bayonne property just so they could see an example of how this would impact the neighborhood. I believe that this is relevant because, since they keep on referring to the standard.
I understand the value, I don't know that, I understand how it would help our clients.
Kathy? Ron, to see the video. Mayor? I'm sorry. Mayor? Okay, Steve is agreeing with our attorney? It's not relevant. Okay. Mike Aravak, you said, show it. John Bezzel said, show it. Mary Ann, no. Kathy, no. Ron, yes? Frank? And I agree, no, so it won't be part of the question.
Okay. Thank you so much. At this point, Peter, did you conclude your testimony?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have the, I'm sorry, can we have the engineer, the planner, the visual player ask what the person is doing? Okay.
Chair will run the show.
Thank you.
Real quick, I know that our planner, our engineer and our planner haven't had a chance. Something you got one of? Well, Liz may be able to respond today. I would recommend that we also get a chance to respond something other than eleven o'clock tonight. Right, that's worth for the board to consider and I'll hand it back to you.
Absolutely. I think that's only fair that Liz has an opportunity to review all this information and come back at our next meeting and provide you with your opinion. Okay, so then we will go to Mr. Vitale.
I actually have an important question for you, just what we used you said. Are you available for the next meeting, Mr. Stecque, on Monday?
What is the next meeting?
Next on Monday.
On the 16th?
Sixteenth.
Because that's important, because if he says no, then that changes everything.
Well, that's gonna be a problem. So maybe you can let them know that you need to be here? Because we have had, prior to tonight, we have had thirteen and a half hours of testimony on this case. And we have made every accommodation for everyone. So I would suggest either you get a different planner or... Or you make that call. Maybe you can come here early and go there later or vice versa. We're here till eleven o'clock at night.
The point here is that it's, as you go on, you have eleven, you go along at twelve. It's only there that, yeah, and the board will be allowed to question. I understand other conveniences, but there is a, there is gonna be a conflict between whatever you have on Monday here and there. And I don't know how far along schedule, but it would, I think, for who the objector in this court, if you could discuss that, you know, the availability of a witness to be cross-examined is pretty important. Everybody, you know, the applicant's advocate must attend, so it is pretty important. I would strongly suggest that the ability to do that and the inability to then be cross-examined and questioned by others influences the way it's gonna be given testimony. It's just natural, it has to be available.
Well, I'm here this evening to be cross-examined. I can't right now say that I'm gonna dump other clients that I'm committed to.
We have time for them to cross-examine, we have twenty minutes. We can do that right now.
Yes, but the board attorney, I can have some questions. But the board attorney just said that he would like his planner to have some time to review these new ordinance, these new variances. That is one hundred percent reasonable.
Sure, and if, for some reason, because of prior commitment, if they can't be available by the sixteenth, then we request that in another special hearing where Mr. Stecque is available, we be providing for this. Especially since there's apparently a new variance that hasn't been addressed at all and also the planner and everybody else needs to prepare. So I think that since you guys have already granted so much hours, if Peter, if Mr. Stecque cannot attend, then we should be allowed to have him come back on a date where he's available.
But we also have a meeting on the eighteenth, so we'll give you that choice, how's that?
I'm in chat on the eighteenth, but I'll have to, I'll have to see if I can...
I would suggest that you make yourself available at one of those years.
I understand your suggestion, it's just that I cannot.
It seems like the, I'm sorry, I think that some other people from the applicant might not also be here. So maybe there's another date that works for both parties then.
I just, let me just, can I just make a quick record? So, I know Ms. Kumar, you went to look...
Kumar, thank you.
I know, Ms. Kumar, that you went to review documents or asked to review documents like over a month, maybe two months ago. So the fact that you guys waited this long to retain counsel and a planner should not prejudice this applicant.
First off, I'd like to...
Let me finish.
I object to this because...
Let's not make this an argument. He's gonna make a record. If you finish, it's not gonna be a back-up. That's not what happens, you address the board, you don't address each other, that's it. Mr. Vitale's making a record, given when the board asks for response, he will get a response.
And so I believe that this board has been extraordinarily accommodating in granting meeting requests. It has been extraordinarily accommodating when it comes to witness and public questions. There were some people who were up at the microphone for forty-five minutes and people close to that. I think the board has gone above and beyond to give everyone an opportunity to present testimony. We have three meetings today, Monday and the eighteenth to wrap this case up, which again, is an extraordinarily generous amount of time that the board is giving this applicant and the objectors. And it is our position, if this objector cannot have their planner available, then we should not be prejudiced for that. And I don't think that we should be assigning any additional dates beyond the three dates that we have. That is our position, based on the long history of this case and all of the time and effort that this board has given to this case, which is extraordinary.
Yeah, records have been made.
Okay.
Stop. Records have been made, you can ask your questions.
Thank you, I would like to, I need to reply to the...
No, you don't get to make rules. He's speaking, he may direct his question, that's it.
I think I'm allowed to respond.
I don't think you understand.
I do understand that when they're referencing...
Just downing down doesn't work, please. You think you're right, you gotta get a chance to comment. This is not just gonna be an argument.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
I'll just make a cell question. That's it.
What's your question?
Do you have no credibility in the information that is presented?
Please, yes, we do agree with you.
If I gave any question not giving credibility to Mr. Stecque, not all this presented, is the ability to examine and to cross-examine. If the public gets a question, you know, for hours, witnesses, that's, all those things are very appropriate. But a witness has to be able to not say anything, nor, I didn't, and if I implied it, I would throw out any implication to not give credibility to anyone. It's not what I meant, the ability for all interested parties to question is important, that's what's important.
The applicant has continually made impressions that they're inclined with the ordinance. And that's a blanket thing. I can say from the master planning committee, when we made law and made rules and regulations, they were broad enough to allow an applicant room to make an application, but it wasn't a blanket ticket that you can come in and do whatever you feel like. I think there's an overriding factor that they ignored the public. And this state public needs to be heard and they need to know that their issues are addressed.
If I may. We, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, we heard your, we heard your testimony tonight and we're going to have some time for some questions for Mr. Vitale. If you can't make it to the next meeting, we're going to have our planner give her opinion on what you testified to, okay? And then the board will make the decision. Okay? So I think that's, you think that's fair?
Look, see what happens when I...
Okay, yeah.
And everybody knows the consideration. Vitale, Dan, Michael, Good Day, go to the questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Stecque.
Good evening.
Mr. Stecque, did you review any of the transcripts in this case?
No.
So you did not have the benefit of reviewing any of the testimony during the, how many, five hearings? Five hearings that have occurred to date?
No, my introduction was this evening, listening to your planner's testimony.
Okay, sir, so you're standing before this board this evening, giving professional planning testimony, having not reviewed a single word of anything that has occurred in this body since we started this case, true?
Prior to this evening, that is correct.
Okay, and you are sticking by your testimony that you are qualified to give an opinion in this case, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, relevant because, I mean, that's, I'm allowed to object here.
No, you're like that as relevant, you don't have to.
Okay.
Don't speak in objection.
It's irrelevant.
And, no speaking in objection, you're objective as relevant, but ask me what he listened to, please drop it, please.
Can I explain my relevance here? The reason why I'm saying that is because he's giving testimony based upon the planner's testimony. Much like their planner said, well, the other guy that he testified was this. They are, he's literally basing upon... They are... He's literally basing upon just their planner's testimony, which their own person did, so I don't understand the relevance for this, but thank you.
It was...
Okay, Mr. Stecck, returning to the questions. Um, included within the testimony from prior hearings was traffic testimony relating to the parking of the tractor-trailer truck on the property. Um, but you don't know that because you didn't review it correctly?
I reviewed the plans that show, uh, the tractor-trailer movements, and I'm aware, even this evening, it was repeated that the tractor-trailer there would be for forty-five minutes, a couple times a week.
So you did review the plans. Why did you testify that McDonald's has not described how a load trucks on the property?
Because it hasn't fixed a location for a forty-foot-long location that the ordinance requires to be on the site plan.
But you, because you weren't here and didn't read the transcript, you don't know that we do have an application that we identify?
You're going to load in an active aisle, I understand.
Correct. But you didn't...
I heard that this evening.
But you didn't review any of the testimony that, literally, thirty or forty questions on how the truck is going to operate? You didn't review any of that testimony, correct?
I've already answered your question.
Okay, so the answer is no, you didn't review any of that?
I'll answer it a third time. Prior to this evening, while I reviewed the application materials, I did not attend any of the hearings or listen to the prior testimony.
And of course, if you had reviewed the testimony and prepared yourself, you might have different opinions in this case, true?
I don't know. I would... In my opinion, the focus of my testimony is, uh, to review your planner's testimony, and I think I have adequate foundation to make, read to those opinions.
But we will never know, because you've already testified, right?
I can't answer that question, whether you'll know or not.
Okay. Um, Mr. Stecck, um, you... Have you ever testified uh, in support of an application where there is a restaurant on a corner lot with no buffering whatsoever?
Um, I don't recall an instance.
Are you sure?
I'm sure that I don't recall.
March fifth, twenty twenty-four?
Relevant.
I have a report
How is this relevant?
From Verona, where you support an application of a corner lot with zero buffering, and you were the planner. Now, this evening, I'm not finishing my question. This evening, you testified that the buffering was insufficient on this property, but on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, you testified that a restaurant on a corner lot with no buffering satisfies the standards, and there was a residential property adjacent. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
But if I could, if I could give you the details, there was an existing...
One sec, please, one second.
Okay. Now, I'm... I'm recross...
No, I'm going to address both the jurors and the witnesses. Unless the chair advise otherwise, I'm trying to be forward on what happened. Please don't tell... Neither attorney should advise what somebody should be doing. They state things until the chair brings me in, I'm going to be the author. You can go first, okay?
When were you retained in this case?
Within the last week and a half.
So give me the earliest date you can to review.
I don't recall, I've looked at phone calls.
Was it on a Monday, Tuesday?
I don't recall about looking at the time sheet.
I'm...
I'm exactly, but I'm hesitant, so I'm laying the foundation.
Okay, that's what I'm doing. So the pictures in your report are dated December fifth?
Yes.
Ms. Kumar... Kumar was retained on December ninth. Why were you taking pictures on the fifth?
Because, uh, one of the neighbors contacted me to see if I would be interested in reviewing the application.
Okay, what other things did you do, um, based on the neighbor's request?
Well, I looked at the application materials that were on the file. I looked at the reexamination report, I looked at the master plans. As I said, I toured the property and took photographs. Um, and I talked to my clients who, uh, told me what... They understood the application, give up.
Now, you said before that, uh, our planner, Mr. Grabian, was looking at the wrong document, you remember?
Yes, I remember saying that.
So you know he didn't review the summary of nineteen seventy-five master plan?
He... The only thing he said in his testimony was the two thousand and eighteen. He referred to it as a master plan, but it's not the master plan, it's the reexamination report.
But do you know that he didn't review that report?
He didn't. He said that he only read the two thousand and eighteen plan.
Okay, and again, I'll just ask it one last time. You have firsthand knowledge that this gentleman didn't review that nineteen seventy-five?
From the record that's been presented and his response to questioning, he said he only reviewed the two thousand and eighteen document.
You said that, um, there is a policy, your words, uh, that there are no trucks, delivery trucks on Dayton Road.
Well, it's not a policy, there's a law
Right.
that designates the length of Dayton, uh, for... prohibits truck traffic over, I think, five tons.
Okay, and you're aware there's an exception for deliveries, right?
Yes.
Okay, why wasn't that addressed in your testimony?
I did, maybe you weren't listening.
No, I must have missed it, why don't you repeat it?
I said that I'm aware that you can locate, you can make deliveries to a site
Right.
that's in that area, but I gave an example of the McDonald's that's on Broadway and Fair Lawn, where it was a corner lot, where there was a side street that was residential, and that McDonald's does not have access to the side street.
Okay, but in Morris Plains, you're aware of the exception, correct?
I don't understand your question.
You're aware that there's an exception to deliveries in Morris Plains?
Well, there's a generic exception, that if you have a site that you are delivering to, you can do that, but what I meant, what... Not what I meant, but I said there's a law that says we don't want truck traffic on Dayton, and I said that establishes the policy that you'd like to discourage truck traffic on Dayton.
Sir, you keep... You said a few times, you said, um, "Well, the board just changed the zoning." So they knew that ten-by-twenty spaces were wrong. And they knew that, uh, they would need some, uh, relief for what happened. Sir, you've done, you've done this a long time. Right, are you saying, are you testi...
Stop, stop, one second. You've got to keep the plain record, please, I know this question's a little bit long. I'm finishing, that answer.
So are you saying that only conforming applications are appropriate? At the planning board, when there's a... When there's an ordinance that's passed in close proximity to the hearing?
I'm saying that there's a presumption of validity of all ordinances, but the fact that this is recently adopted means that you can't make the argument that, uh, this is thirty-five years old and the industry has changed. My presumption, if there's a... The ordinance is legitimate, and the municipality is allowed to have its own standards, ten-by-twenty foot spaces, despite what the business model is of McDonald's. And I'm assuming that when the governing body adopted this ordinance, they probably knew what McDonald's looked like.
So you do redevelopment work, right?
Occasionally.
Okay, and you know how it works, right? They draft a redevelopment plan that has the zoning, the town council, and then a planning board will take up a site plan application from an applicant according to the redevelopment plan. Does that make sense to you?
When a property is blighted, uh, yes, the law allows you to have a redevelopment plan for one piece of property.
And typically, they even submit plans to the governing body, and they attach them to either redevelopment plan or the redevelopment.
Jersey City is great at that. You're right.
And, and Mr. Stecck, even when the governing body writes the zoning, there are typically many deviations or deviations from the zoning. And that's nearly contemporaneous, sir. So how is it that in this case, where you don't even have a contemporaneous? I mean, it's a redevelopment plan. Isn't in your professional opinion common that there are deviations and variances in design variables all the time?
This is not a redevelopment site. It hasn't been declared blighted. Your analogy to a redevelopment plan is on another plan. It has nothing to do with this application. This is conventional zoning.
I'm asking about the timing, and from when... It is a zoning...
If this ordinance were adopted twenty years ago, I could grant you that things have changed. But because it's a recent plan, the governing body consciously, it's presumed or consciously said, "We want ten-by-twenty foot spaces, we want a designated loading area."
So it's not your experience, sir, that, and you didn't read the testimony, so I understand, that the nine-by-eighteen spaces are not standard now in the market?
They're not necessarily standard, depending upon the use. There is a presumption of validity of this municipality's ordinances for non-residential development.
Did you go out and measure the spaces there now?
The spaces that are there now, no, most of them are so faded you can't measure.
How many spaces were on the total site?
I don't know. Which is irrelevant to my consideration, since you're demolishing all of the improvements on the property.
Would it surprise you that there were approximately sixty?
I didn't count them, so I... I don't know if I'd be surprised or not.
And that we're reducing the number of spaces from sixty to thirty?
The number of spaces, it's the use of the spaces that's important, not the number.
I was just asking you if you knew that. And you considered it?
I... Since you are demolishing all the improvements, in my opinion, the existing non-conformities are irrelevant.
You mentioned, um, noise. You're not an epustopol engineer, are you?
No.
Okay, so you have no special training or any licensures or anything else to opine? Wait, wait, let me finish. To opine on sound?
I just have experience with applications that have been denied or withdrawn because of noise problems with truck loading and unloading.
But you've never testified as an expert in sound?
No, I just have experience in my practice.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Stecck, thank you.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Stecck?
No, we don't have another expert right now.
This is just your page right here.
Friend, we can't hear you.
I think, I think the question is... Of two questions, yes. If there's no more questions, and if there was no more questions for this witness, is there anybody else who would want... Do you have any other witnesses?
Hold on a second, let me just talk a minute.
Left branch, right there.
They do have more. Well, let us know if they are and when we'll meet them.
Yeah, we'd like the names too, please.
So they are still working for the confirmation names, but it appears that they're going to be having a traffic engineer, their own expert, uh, for them. Right now, I think we're going to make sure that they're available on the sixteen or the eighteen.
To make them available on the sixteen.
I think it's fair, it's always worse than fair. If you're speaking to somebody, you might find out that person's available on sixteen. It's fair to give that, and it's actually standard.
Yes, we're going to get... Yes, right now, I don't have the names of those people right now, because they're still working to retain them, but being that the... Well, it's almost eleven. But that, um, they are just retaining these right now. Uh, they would like to have that traffic expert. They are confirming, they might have, like, just engaged the person, so I can't say it's completely permanent, but we'll make sure to have him on the sixteen. And notify, and notify the board, as well as the other, the applicant's attorney for the sixteen.
How about a lot before the sixteen?
A lot before the sixteen.
Okay, like Wednesday?
A lot before the sixteen.
You let us know on Wednesday?
Yes.
What witnesses you're going to have, okay? And who they are?
Yes, we will.
And you make them available on the sixteen?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Sorry about that, right. I didn't think you'd do that much.
Are there any other questions of this witness by the board? Jason, there? No, no, no. Okay, it's, it's, uh, eleven o'clock? Okay, okay. One moment, we're going to let the public ask questions of that witness. And we're going to do that because he may not be available.
I can contribute, so I'm probably not allowed to speak, but I would just like to understand why there's a rush to get this done before January?
This is, this is, it's no question, that's it. Daniel Conway, three room room. I asked a question earlier about the difference between a drive-up restaurant and a drive-through restaurant. Or, uh, is there a significant difference between the two?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, a minute. Drive-in, drive-up?
Right, 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 right.
A drive-in restaurant is, I recall from the definitions, is you kind of sit and eat in your car, and sometimes you have roller skates, and sometimes you don't. Uh, and a drive-through is what this is, because there's a window and you pick up the food.
If I can just follow up to that. In the two thousand and eighteen reexamination, uh, in the section where they reference this particular zoning, they specifically say, "Drive-through retail pharmacies and drive-up restaurants." To me, this is a question. Drive-up restaurant is, I've ordered my food, I pull up to a parking lot, someone brings something out. They specifically separate...
That's gotta be a question. It's gotta be a question. You're protesting.
He just said he...
It must be a question, what he thinks.
And that's...
Set it down, agent.
Yet in the master plan, it says, "Drive-through for pharmacies, drive-up for restaurants." Is there a significant difference in what they were reexamining, and why they would change the language?
Well, uh, you have to look at the definitions of the ordinance today, but a drive-in, uh, in my mind, is something where typically eaten in your car. It's a different entity than a drive-through.
Greg Devine, ninety-one Sun Valley Way.
And you have not contributed to this fund to hire these, the attorney?
No.
Okay.
Not representing, but you're not, uh, me. Speaking as a citizen of Morris Plains. Um, earlier you were testifying to the town, I think it was twenty-two dash five, when they issued a four-ton or above vehicles going on the...
Uh, yeah, yes, there was a, uh, a traffic ordinance that designates the length of Dayton for non-truck traffic.
Gotcha, so I heard you talking about some of the legislative history, what they must have known. Some of the testimony, I... Did you read any that I know is answered, but I'm not quite sure? The traffic engineer on behalf of McDonald's had testified that in fact McDonald's is a speedwell address, are you aware of that?
Yes.
Are you aware that the traffic expert for McDonald's indicated that deliveries will be made by a tractor-trailer coming off of Speedwell into McDonald's on Speedwell?
Their exhibit shows a tractor-trailer turning movements that has, uh, coming in from Speedwell and exiting onto the side of Dayton.
Right, so are you also aware that that traffic expert indicated that in fact McDonald's could enter and exit onto Speedwell, but it was their preference and not their preferred plan to do so? Are you aware of that?
They haven't shown that, that it can be done on a diagram, so I don't know if it can or not be. I may have testified about that, but it's not demonstrated in any of the exhibits.
Okay, so that would be in the record. So if in fact a speedwell address and the entrance on Speedwell or exit on Speedwell is, 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 is actually in the record for the McDonald's traffic person, then based on your knowledge and experience, would that regulation actually remain without an exception? Because a delivery wouldn't need to be made on Dayton Road?
It would improve the application a minor amount. It would improve the application a minor amount, but the, the current law allows for truck traffic to access this site, but that's why I'm gonna talk about policy. The policy is this municipality doesn't want to see trucks on Dayton, and, and that would certainly at least respond positively to that policy.
But if the town was following a district letter of the law for twenty-two dash five, and McDonald's says it can enter and exit off of Speedwell, there were, would it be arguable that you do not in fact need any access to Dayton Road to make delivery on Speedwell?
Well, that's why we're, part of this application is the site plan approval, and while, again, the use might be permitted, the use as embodied in this site plan deserves denial, in my opinion, because of the evidence so far in the record.
So if there was an approval, it would be based on McDonald's plan preference rather than a requirement that they answer, don't they?
Well, it's, it's, I don't know if it's a preference, but the answer is, what they propose is what the, the board reviews, and as you know, this is kind of a moving target. We're getting now apparently gooseneck lighting and et cetera, et cetera. And more than landscaping, no one knows what that is yet, uh, but the applicant is suggesting that there could be modifications, it's just that typically they're, they get put on a plan, so the board knows what is approving.
So would, your history of expertise, does that include understanding the basis of a board's basis for denial of an application?
Yes.
So, if McDonald's, if the record shows McDonald's that they can enter and exit on Speedwell using tractor trailers or whatever trucks they need, and it's a speedwell address, would, based on your expert opinion, does the board have a basis to deny the application because they can enter and exit off of Speedwell, but not along Dayton, and it's merely because they have a plan preference to exit onto Dayton?
The fact that they have a preference is irrelevant to this application.
Okay, so.
So it is a few elements, the, the fact that they have the ability to enter and exit tractor trailers on Speedwell, and they're still, they still want to have, uh, exiting onto Dayton, is one of the factors that would allow this board to deny the application.
Thank you very much.
Claire, two may blow. A question I've asked of their planner about lots, the fact that these are currently two parcels. My understanding is the second parcel was bought by the owner and they're trying to develop the two parcels together. One thing that, at least, I haven't heard a lot of testimony on here, is how that process works. And I think that's important because this planning board, most of the members of the planning board in the town council voted for rezoning this according to the current parcels. So I guess, to my mind, uh, the, when, when their planner just keeps repeating that this is an approved use, it's an approved use for a certain size parcel. People often don't like to answer hypotheticals, but I've heard, I don't know if it's true, that the same owner also owns the property next door. Could they then mow down everything and make a sixteen lane drive-throughs because it's a drive-through? There has to be some limit, in other words, a month's of previous uses, taking into account the intentions of the board in the past.
Well, uh, intentions are secondary, but, I mean, the, you read the law, and there, there is no defect, the fact that they're combining properties. It, 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 clearly this development, if they didn't combine the properties, they could not have this use. If they acquire two more properties down the line, maybe it becomes a hundred percent conforming use, that's not before the board. They have, they have to address this issue, and if it doesn't require a variance to combine properties, if they're demolishing everything on them anyway.
So they can just, um, so their planner said that there has to be a vote by this board, is that vote just on the application, or is there a separate vote for combining these lots?
Um, it's, it.
Sure, I don't know, because a lot of times, because we try to ask questions, we totally can't ask, so.
That's not, it's not a standard for merchandising, subdividing and making them small, yes, making them bigger, they're right to do that.
So there's no, um, there's no basis for legal denial of that or any criteria?
And they, and they already made it clear, they can't build, they, they don't, it's just spiraling deep.
So not to waste anyone's time, but just hypothetically, so if they bought four places in a row, they could, they could create one business there, a supermarket? No, I'm just asking, is that, is that what you're saying?
I'm not there with that, because I know a lot, but the ability to merge, yes, it's a slam dunk, it's yes, if you can always merge, it could make a big, not a big one.
Okay. So I'd suggest that the planning board, when they think of these ordinances, needs to consider that maybe putting in some sort of square footage, because it seems to me that partly why we found ourselves in this situation is because the best intentions of the planning board, when the owner bought up the two properties, then changed what it was on.
I should disrupt myself in the vision, because you asked a good question, I just didn't know, sorry.
Uh, okay, so basically what they're saying is that they develop a plan, it sounds like, if they accept the plan and they accept the merger?
Yes.
Okay, and is there any, uh, in your experience, is there any case in which there was a deny based on zoning changing because of the lots being merged?
They, if, if, if an ordinance had a maximum lot size, and I think Morris Town is trying to do that, uh, that could trigger a variance, but there's not, there, there's no minimum lot size here and no maximum, so it doesn't violate any standard.
One thing, I know you're not a traffic expert, and there was supposed to be someone testifying, but one thing that, uh, the applicant has repeatedly said is that they're not responsible for off-site traffic, they keep citing this Duncan Donuts case. Uh, my question is that, my understanding is that, uh, the opinion in that case held that when turns are involved, that actually does become relevant to the site. So in other words, they're not responsible for the amount of traffic on the road, but they're responsible. So in your analysis, did you take into account the turns and the way in which turning in and out of that lot may or may not affect the pedestrian danger?
Well, again, I, I said that, again, since this is a blank slate, they're demolishing everything, technically, it's good planning to align this combined entrance and exit driveway with Hillview across the street. The applicant has this jog now, which is not as good, in fact, the town standard said either should, with streets anyway, should align or be a hundred and twenty-five feet away, this jog's, I think, like it's forty-six feet away, so it's kind of, uh, it creates safety issues.
So are there standards for the, um, turn and pedestrians that we should be looking at?
Well, it's, it's one of the considerations to this, but you can't deny the use as the use. You can deny this application based on site plan defects, defects, and the treatment of pedestrian traffic is, is one of the considerations.
Thanks very much for your minutes, Tom, and I'll sleep.
Jamie McHalezki, thirty-one Grove Avenue, P O T K A L D S K. I just have a process question, not sure if I can ask it or not.
All right, go to the witness.
Tom Battalies, B A T T A G L I E S C, top of the room. So Mr. Batolo asked you if you were an acoustical engineer, but is it not correct that the burden of proof is on them to prove that they're meeting the noise performance standards?
It is, I think, because of the, the location of a truck in proximity to a residential property line, in my opinion, as a planner, it's clearly a red flag issue that needs to be addressed. The applicant hasn't addressed it.
So is that yet another reason to potentially turn down the application if they're not able to approve confluence with that performance?
That's correct, it is, is the burden of the applicant to provide that evidence through expert witnesses. The applicant has only talked about turning down the volume, you know, of, of the, uh, the order system. Thank you.
Carolyn Bennett, nineteen Dayton. In your experience, we talked about your credentials and, um, cases that you've been involved in in the past. Um, have you seen any applications that promise an approval by the DOT? Case in point being the optimizations to the crosswalk, that later DOT changes their mind and those things actually don't come to fruition?
Uh, I don't know of an instance, I'm just not, at that, and once an application is heard, sometimes there are adjustments that DOT does, I'm often not aware of that, so I, I can't answer any questions.
That's okay, um, and then really quickly, because we were talking about timelines and calendars, yours in particular. In your experience, are most cases felt this rushed, or very usually given adequate time?
It, it depends upon the case of the municipality and the county that you're in.
Gotcha, okay, good for learning, thanks.
Field Sevier, eleven Dayton Road. Um, in your opinion, as a planner, would you believe that a double drive-through fast food restaurant adjacent to the residential property neighborhood would be a detriment to the property?
Without adequate protections, it would be a detriment, and again, I'm gonna go with the noise issue. The state law says, your house could be five hundred feet away, but the state's law for losses, you measure the impact at the residential property line, because you want to go out in your yard and enjoy your property.
And the noise doesn't just pertain to the actual building itself?
Well, in this case, I think the noise generator, uh, is going to be the truck that's loading and unloading. The tractor trailer.
Also the seven to the eight hundred cars.
They, they will generate noise, but the, the real big act, I suspect, is the truck issue.
And would that also affect property values possibly?
I can't answer on property values, but it would lessen the enjoyment of your property if you had to put up with that.
Barb Bianchi, eleven Levee Drive. I have not contributed. Uh, thank you, sir, for your testimony, appreciate it. Uh, just to pick up on the noise sound, when, based on your training and experience, when these eighteen-wheelers are dropping things off, uh, even if they turn the emissions off, the refrigeration system is still operating, is that right?
If it's a refrigeration truck, yes, there's a humming from that, and that motor.
And as you're aware, at some point in time, the Moore's Plains facility that's being proposed was analogized as close as possible to the Bayonne facility, you're aware of it, right?
I'm aware that that's been alleged.
Right, and you had an opportunity to review the video that has been disallowed in this particular proceeding, but that was taken because of the testimony that was provided by McDonald's, so that we could verify the similarities between Bayonne and Moore's Plains, you're aware of that, right?
It's, in my opinion, relevant, because you can't go to this site and measure noise, because nothing's going on here. So typically, a noise expert would go to another site that has a similar operation with a noise meter and measure what's going on.
Right, and you, and you're aware, we, we didn't just pick Bayonne out of the air, it was because it was testified to by McDonald's experts, you're aware of it?
It was referenced, yes.
And you had an opportunity to review that video?
I did.
And, uh, that person was just there for a couple of minutes to take some pictures, by the way, right, and a video, correct?
Yes.
And it showed a truck that was there. Well, wait, wait, wait a second, I want to make it right.
They stopped, I said, "It's not relevant," the board decided, "It's not," trying to get it into your testimony, it's just trying to interact. We all know that, you can't do it.
Sir, just so it's clear, just so it's clear, you sent the video.
Hey, you're not gonna bring this argument, no. Discuss about anything, it's not coming in.
Can I at least make a record? I won't ask the question, can I at least make a?
Okay.
I'll hold the record right now. I think that will hurt, please.
I want to make this clear, make it easy. No, it, the, the record, it's not gonna end, no testimony, no questions about the video, I, it wasn't, what it was that they said, no. It, it, I know what you're trying to do, but the answer.
You didn't keep saying you know what I'm trying to do, respectfully, I don't think you do, okay? You ruled, and you ruled that the video couldn't be played, you didn't rule it couldn't be testimony about the video. Now, if you want to rule that way now, fine.
That's, that's a ruling.
Okay, so I, so the record is clear, we can't discuss anything about the pictures or the video, because we can talk about pictures before. Are pictures also gonna be disallowed here?
Video, okay, discussed.
How about pictures of the site?
What pictures of what site?
There's also pictures at that location as well, before we get into it, and the attorney put them up, is that ruling with regard to the video, the same with respect to the pictures that were taken?
Are these pictures you're talking about?
No, no, the, the, the pictures at the Bayonne facility that was referenced as being similar to the Moore's Plains facility.
There's not gonna be testimony or questions or pictures of how another facility, it's who can judge?
Even the facility they reference is an example.
Even, right, so, so strike from their record?
Yeah, then, that's true, I, then I asked the move to strike their whole testimony with respect to the similarity of the. I just made a motion to strike the testimony of her expert. No, I happen to be a citizen, I want my time stopped, I happen to be a citizen that happens to be a lawyer, that doesn't disavow me on my ability to have an interest in what happens in this community. Now, are you saying that we're not allowed to use it, and I'm saying, I'm asking that to strike the testimony that they referenced as the basis, that Bayonne is gonna be like Moore's Plains? I'm just really asking, if we don't have an ability to cross-examine the credibility of that, then why should they have been allowed to have admitted it? Can you rule on my motion, please? Okay, that's, here's the answer, you're not gonna strike the testimony. So, is it in your experience, my last question to you, is having environmental impacts, though, you got smells, noise, and things of that nature, typical for this kind of application?
Uh, it, it is often done, and, and it's allowed in the ordinance.
Okay, because if there's a problem, we may be looking at a twenty-foot wall, right?
If there's a noise issue, it's gonna be hard to, uh, protect that residential structure.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
I actually do have a question now, Jamie McHalezki, thirty-one Grove Avenue. Uh, earlier you were asked about a property that you allowed or you were in support of that didn't have a buffer zone?
Yes.
And you weren't allowed to finish your question, can you finish that now?
I can finish that question. So, on Bluefield Avenue, there's a side street, and there is a two-story building with residential above, and there was a dry cleaners underneath it, and there was a bar next door. On the side street, there were, I think, five parking spaces. And the applicant was converting the dry cleaning place to part of its restaurant, sharing the liquor license next door. There was no landscaping before, except on the abutting neighbor's property, there was a big private hedge that separated my, my client's property from the first house, it was a great private hedge, it was probably eight feet tall. There was no place to put any landscaping on the property, so we said, "We're gonna keep essentially the parking the way it is." And this is a tiny corner lot, it was maybe, uh, fifty by a hundred and twenty-five feet wide.
Actually, when I thought that, was it new development, or was there a drive-through, can you give me a dis?
There was no drive-through, uh, this was a, a, um, this was a existing building with only interior modifications, and there were minor changes to, I think, the five parking spots in the rear that you had no alternatives to. They simply backed out of the side.
Yeah, so, still.
I just have one follow-up question.
Okay.
There was just a gentleman up at the microphone, and he agreed on a number of things, including that there's been no testimony about noise, odor, uh, the tractor trailer noise, et cetera. Um, so I just want to confirm, you did not review all of the voluminous testimony that this board heard about noise in that parking lot? You didn't read a single word of any of that testimony from Mr. Paraguay and Mr. Duarte? You heard Mr., but you did not read any of their testimony about noise and about odors and about the quality of life issues? That's my only question, you didn't read a word of it, is that true?
I already answered that question.
And the answer's none?
That was my answer then.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so hang on. You have a question, okay, go ahead.
So I'm a little bit confused here, and maybe you can.
That, that doesn't make you special, by the way.
Oh, I'm special, very special, trust me. Um, what is the, what is a, a four ton, does a truck have to be registered over, uh, eight thousand pounds?
No, I think there are two issues, uh, on Dayton, there's an ordinance, right, that says.
Four tons.
No truck, and I think it's a five-ton, four.
Four tons.
Four-ton living, it's over four tons, it shouldn't use Dayton as a pass-through.
Correct, okay, so, just like, so you have the, the citizens back there on the corner, um, and.
and a bricks truck that comes into the back and uses Dayton Road. What's the gross weight of that truck? Is that something that would be surpassing the four-ton?
I don't know. But the, it depends whether it's loaded with bullion or not, I suppose, but I don't know.
And just what about a landscaper's truck with a trailer? Again, is that over four tons, registered over four tons?
I don't know. All I can tell you is I suspect the tractor-trailer that delivers to McDonald's is over five tons.
Is there a?
Over four tons, excuse me.
Is there a three-minute idle log?
I'm not aware of the specifics, but I'm aware that it's a law that's hard to enforce.
Is there one then?
I don't know. I don't know the specifics of it, and I would not volunteer because I don't know the specifics.
I believe there's a three-minute idle log or whatever, you know, certain things. I guess a truck, a parked truck would have to.
That's probably a pollution issue rather than a noise issue.
Right. A hundred percent. So, would a refrigerator unit on a truck also be required to adhere to that three-minute idle log?
I don't know. Probably not, because otherwise the food would thaw.
And another question you talked about, you brought up where the borough has an ordinance about aligning the streets, does that also include state roads? Two oh two is a standard road?
I'm not trying to interrupt your question.
You said that the streets should.
Oh, you have, there's, in your site plan and subdivision ordinance, you have standards.
Does that apply to a state road as well?
Just borough roads. While, it's a planning principle that applies, period, except that the state makes the plan evolve because it's their road.
So, probably it doesn't, that. If you brought up, does not, would not apply to this, or would?
Well, the answer is, it applies to your, to enforcing your ordinances. Let me make a clarification. It applies to new streets. But in this case, we have a T in, well, we have an intersection, and we have a driveway. And what I'm saying is, the principle of what's safer applies, in my opinion. It's nice to have, if you look at, you know, to the property just, you know, to the east of this, like this with the Dunkin' Donuts, if you look at that driveway, it aims right at the street across Speedwell. That's a good design. It's on the.
Either a bit of right and then a left.
The problem with it being only forty-six feet away is that the car that wants to exit and go uphill view doesn't really have an incentive to straighten out on Speedwell and then make a formal left. They're gonna kind of do a diagonal, which is not safe.
I think the testimony, if you didn't get me wrong, trying to wrap my head around this, is that the state approved this, this design on two oh two with the driveway and the alignment?
Yo, there's, there are different considerations when you combine lots, because now you have more flexibility to put a driveway. Now, before, when they were, I don't know when those developments occurred, but when they were separate lots, the state can't deny you access to the property. But once you combine them, and in this case, demolish all the curbs and the sidewalks, in my opinion, you have the opportunity to do something that's safe.
The, that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand is, are both traffic engineers, ours and theirs, like this design of where this driveway is? And I think the DOT as well?
I am not a traffic expert, I'm just talking about planning principles. And maybe they didn't take into consideration that the applicant is demolishing everything on the site, so it hit the driveway to be moved. I don't know what was in their mind, I'm not a traffic expert, but I, I know your standards and I know typical planning standards.
Okay. That's gonna be it for tonight? Nope. It's eleven-thirty, okay? And I, I, I'll stay here all night, but we have other people to consider. Okay? Goodnight. Excuse me, we have something.
Everybody, please, we continue. Meeting, the vote continues. Next Monday?
Next.
Yeah, seven o'clock?
Seven, seven o'clock.
Monday, seven o'clock. I will be in state, two days later. No further notice. We see you all here on Monday, seven o'clock.
We have a motion to adjourn?